So 6:31 PM, Monday, June 7, 2021, we call the board of selectmen meeting to order. So our usual announcements, this meeting is being recorded. Notes and taken from minutes as well by Gail Hunter. If anybody has our customary item zero on the agenda, if anybody has any comments they want to make for items that are not on the agenda tonight, give you a moment to speak now, so just raise your hand or speak up and be identified. All right, I don't see anybody, so let's move on to our first agenda item, which is going to be very brief. It's actually, this is a public hearing, it's actually technically not a public hearing, it's an entertainment license pool for Bravo by the sea. However, my understanding is there were a couple of butters, at least one butter was not notified in a reasonable timeframe ahead of this meeting, so we need to postpone this entertainment license. So we won't be proceeding with this agenda item tonight. Instead, I will briefly go over the consent agenda without taking it up, just going to fill in the time a little bit between now and our next agenda item. Next agenda is fairly packed, so we're going to try and move through as efficiently as possible. The wheels oftentimes come off, but we'll give it a try. The consent agenda tonight has got a lot of material in it that may be of interest to people. Some of the board of selectmen meeting minutes of May 17th, that's probably not very interesting to people. There's a change to the town tree policy to add include language about heritage trees. There was a request made a previous review. Proposal for a change in the way the Boston Post came is being managed. By the ultimate breath. A special permanent application and a one day liquor license for the 2021 festival by the sea, which is going to is planned to go on as scheduled as normal this year because of lifting of the restrictions, restrictions and schedule that banned out in August. We also have clerical and union contract approvals in the consent agenda. A solid waste contract approval, this is the fifth year of our contract with waste management and we have a new contract negotiated. Different contract. To nonetheless, formality of rescinding the COVID emergency declaration since the governor has rescinded the state declaration effective June 15th, so we'll be covering those things in the consent agenda. Anybody has any interest feels like sticking it all the way out to when we actually process the consent agenda? All right. So I'm going to call us close enough to 6:35. 6:35 PM, so I'll move on to our second agenda, which is a short term paying guest application for 54 Union Street. This is an application. David Demeter. For three bedroom, one and a half bath. Short term paying guest application on 54 Union Street. Members of board of you, I'll have time to review the application and do you have comments or questions on the application as it stands? Mr. Bob Matron.
My only question is, is there anything in terms of insurance that needs to change on these applications for homeowners to do short term? Warning. I can't hear you.
You're asking me, Jeff, on that?
Sure. Greg, by the way.
So it's we have a, we need, we require proof of insurance. It's really the homeowner's risk. As long as they have insurance and we are providing that, they determine the level of risk they want to, they want to take and how much, so we don't set. You know, we don't have a requirement for for the details of that insurance, it has to have a minimum of insurance. So they have that minimum.
That was my only question.
Hi Greg, Greg, this is David Demeter, 54 Union Street.
I did.
I just want to, the insurance policy that I carry for this property, because it's not my primary residence, is a policy that is specific to renters.
Yeah, good, thank you, that's helpful.
No, no problem.
Thank you for that clarification, Jim.
Eli, if I may.
Sure, go ahead.
I guess, as it is, street parking there. Is it, is it all day parking, is it two hour parking? I'm wondering, just because it is close to businesses. And I wonder if that would have an impact. Greg, that's probably for you.
Well, so it's like any other residents in that area, there is two hour restricted parking on a portion of Union Street there. There are areas, obviously, where, where it's just is resident parking, that doesn't have the two hour restriction. So it'll be important for the renters to obtain a temporary residential parking pass in order to park in the residential zone.
So Greg, Dave Demeter again, I did obtain two, I have the guest parking passes, which I've used in the past, there are two of them for the unit, and I've instructed people with a picture of where to park and display those passes while they're parked there.
Yes, okay, very good.
So is that a, I mean, do you, do you purchase, Greg, this is for you, do you purchase, or does the owner purchase one ticket and then that, that are one pass and that pass is good for any, anybody, anytime, or do they have to purchase a parking pass for each new tenant?
I actually need to double check on
So my understanding is that the property is entitled
Excuse me, Mr. Demeter.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm not, I'm not done yet.
I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt. No, I'm sorry.
No, no worries, I get, because I'm looking at what was written in the, your report, Greg, and it does say that the town clerk provides these for $50 per week.
Correct, I was under the assumption that was by basically a license for, you know, for a particular vehicle. But I did not go into the details with either the town clerk or the police about that.
Okay, and is there any reason typically, I know the last short term get paying guests that we looked at, it was off street parking, so it really wasn't a concern in terms of butters. Is this the type of situation where, I mean, I know that it's street parking, people have to find where they can park. But did, do a butters get notified on this?
So this is, this isn't noticed hearing tonight. And I guess it's really no different than if someone was living there full time, they also would have a car that would need to be parked or two poles. That perspective, it's, it's, it's the same impact in terms of parking.
Okay, thank you very much.
Mr. Demeter, if you could just clarify for us, you've been renting this unit already, is that correct? And how have you been managing the parking for your renters to date?
So, so last year, we had the short term. We had short term rentals last year and we had, we have guest passes for the property from the town. And I would just instruct people to park not in the two hour parking area in front of the, directly in front of the unit. And they would find parking on Norwood, Washington, the areas where it's resident parking, but close to the unit. I've had a long term tenant in there since since last year now, so this, this summer would be the short term again, and I have a printed map, a Google map image with highlighted areas of where the parking areas are close by. And it hasn't been a problem so far.
John Round?
Yeah, Eli, I guess that was my only question, I think that it's cleared up that Becky had asked, so I understand that the parking pass is essentially a pass for a vehicle that is out of town and they have to follow all of the rules that any resident sticker would have, I suppose. So if it's two hour parking, well, you've got to pay attention to that, if it's just resident parking, you're fine. And if that's the way I understand it, and so I have no other questions.
Just one, one more point of clarification, it, the town has that unit listed as a three bedroom, one and a half bath, we have it furnished as a two bedroom plus an office with, so it only sleeps four people maximum, so we usually typically only have one car at a time because it's a small unit.
And any comments?
Thank you.
All right. Kind of got that motion, well, any comments in the public?
Don't move.
So I think that Jeff said something, and what he was going to say was in response to my saying, can I get a motion to approve application for short term paying guest rental of 54. Second from Becky Takes.
Yep.
So in the discussion. So we'll call vote, Mr. Bob Matron.
Yes.
Ms. Harris.
Yes.
Mr. Round.
Yes.
Yes, and with a thank you to Mr. Demeter for doing the right process, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Demeter. Good luck to see.
Thank you, and I just want to thank all of the board of selectmen for the work they've done over the past year navigating this COVID. It really has been quite the year, and I think everybody should be appreciative of the work that you've done, so thank you.
Thank you very much, we definitely appreciate that.
All right, have a nice night.
You too.
All right, let's move on to item number three on the agenda, which is Eagle Scout project, project from Jackson Saret and Vine Pike. Jackson, if you would be so kind as to, I guess you are unmuted, just identify yourself for everybody.
Hello.
Everybody about your project.
All right, um, is it okay if I read off of a paper?
Yeah, sure.
Okay, um, so good evening, my name is Jackson Saret, I'm a freshman at Essex Tech studying automotive technology. Thank you for allowing me to attend this meeting, I'm a member of Tube3Manchester and I'm working on my rank of Eagle Scout. I like to present my project idea to you tonight. I lived in Manchester my whole life and I have grown up on many boats. My grandfather, Dave Matrano, owned a powerboat, taught me everything I know about boating. My parents own a sailboat and I'm hoping to learn how to sail this summer. One day when I was out on my grandfather's boat, coming back into the harbor, I got to thinking about the depth of the water and how many boat owners know if they have enough clearance to dock their boats. This is how I had the idea for my Eagle project. There seems to be a great deal of improvements going on to the inner harbor with new docks and other improvements. I would like my designs, I'd like to design my system that tells butters how deep the water is at the current moment so that they can safely dock their boats and turn around if the water is not deep enough for their boat. I am planning on attaching some sort of measurement to gauge the appropriate depth location on each of the docks. So there is a lot of butters. I have finalized, I have not finalized my project design yet, and I would be seeking advice from harbor master as well as other officials. I am planning on putting my project to use by the end of July if it is approved. Does anyone have any questions?
Yes, Jeff, I've got, I've got a question, Eli, if I can ask Jackson. Okay, so, so Jackson, this is going to be posted on the, on the dock, and so boats approaching the dock can get a sense of what the depth is, somehow there'll be a display.
Yes.
Okay, have you gone so far as to figure out how this display is going to be powered?
Um, my idea for this was to have some sort of border sign that as the water goes up, it'll hit each marker. And then you can see, depending on what marker it's at, roughly how deep it is.
All right, from a distance, so that you can see where you are, you don't have to be next to it. I guess my question is, so it'll be a mechanical device, it will not be electrical requiring a battery or something?
No, it'll be just mechanical.
Okay, I was curious whether there was some sort of electrical power and then was wondering if by on was on the hook for many years out to change out the batteries.
No.
Okay. Great, sounds like a good idea, I can identify with that.
Eli, if I may.
Sure, go ahead, Becky.
First of all, Jackson, this is a wonderful idea. As, as a boater, it's, it is definitely nice to know what, what you're, what depth you have. Will it, will it be basically a white board with black numbers and markings on it, will it have any reflective aspect to it?
Um, that was, yeah, that was my idea to have some sort of whiteboard. I was thinking maybe like a white reflective tape on it, and then each foot have a marker depending on the depth, which could either be reflective or non-reflective.
Wonderful, thank you. I'm all set.
Yeah, I had a question.
Go ahead.
Jackson, this is a great project.
Thank you.
But harbor safety is a real important issue. Have you looked at all at the depth markings on the railroad bridge?
Yeah, that's partially where I got my idea from is that, and also behind the police station, there's one. And I was thinking we should have more of those around the harbor, just because those are kind of tucked away. So for people that aren't familiar with it, having one right at like Tux Point in the boat club dock, just so everyone can see it easily was mainly how I got the idea.
And you plan to do this at the boat club dock at Reed Park?
Yes.
And on the town landing?
Yep, and then also I was thinking of one if it's approved at Tux Point.
And Tux Point. Okay, that basically covers it. Good, thank you very much. Do you have scuba?
I do.
And any questions, comments?
Yeah, um, have you, parts of this will be underwater most of the time. Have you thought about ways to keep growth from blocking the information?
Mainly my view is just to every couple of months, either scrub it down or have some sort of anti-fouling. If that's available, some sort of anti-fouling on the sign to keep most growth from flowing.
I was wondering if you could make part of it out of copper, which tends to be automat anti-fouling in its nature.
Yeah, I'll take that consideration.
So Tux Point, um, Reed Park, the area behind the police station, or is there already one there?
There's already one behind the police station, I was thinking also the boat club.
Okay, have you talked to them?
I have not yet, I was waiting for approval from the town.
I understand. Good, thank you. No more questions.
Okay, and you've already been working with buying on this. And will be working on it closely throughout the project, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, well, it sounds like we have our questions from board members. I think the project sounds like a great project.
Thank you.
I look forward to seeing how it turns out. By, I will provide you with great guidance. If he approves of the actual implementation details, I'm quite sure that I'll be happy with it too. So I'd call in favor of your project. Town property, since you're going to be putting up on town property, I will ask for a motion to approve the Eagle Scout project to put tide height markings on the Tux Point, Reed Park, and other town docks. As proposed here tonight. Thank you.
So move.
Second.
All right, I'd like to amend what you just said, Eli. Subject to the recommendations and guidelines provided by the harbor master.
Family amendment accepted. And there's we'll call vote, Bob Matron.
Yes.
Ms. Harris.
Yeah.
Mr. Round.
Yes.
Jake.
Yes.
Mr. Bulleye, both sides. All right, well, thank you very much for coming in tonight, Jackson. We appreciate the effort forward to the improvements.
Thank you. Am I all set to leave the meeting?
Okay.
Yes.
At least I'm on the card.
Hi, everyone.
Good night.
Good night, Jackson.
Continue to move a little hair ahead of our regular schedule here. Don't worry, we'll fix that soon, I'm sure. So, close enough to 6:55. So I'd like to move on to agenda item number four, which is outdoor dining, revisiting outdoor dining. When we approved outdoor dining at the beginning of the spring, since we said that we would be revisiting approvals on a monthly basis. And in response to events. There it noted at the last meeting. Moved up the schedule for providing, while lifting all the restrictions so that business can operate 100% normal activities. And that was effective May 29th and as of June 15th. Emergency restrictions or state of emergency. And 60 days after that, the formal permission for extending outdoor dining from the state will evaporate, so there's a limit right now that we have of six days past that. There's legislation that may be brought up to extend. Allow the extension, allow municipalities to extend outdoor dining beyond that. And I believe the governor was talking about it November 1st. First date. Outdoor dining. However, we said that we would have a discussion about how we wanted to handle the additional parking spaces that have been given to restaurants in the near term. And going around to the different restaurants. Believe that we've got an agreement with most of the restaurants to give up the parking spaces and we will allow or continue to allow sidewalk dining where there is clearance, at least a minimum of free fee clearance for a passage on sidewalks. And we have information back from all the restaurants at this point. They believe that we can sell. So tonight, we're going to have a discussion around this and see if the board wants to make changes to the outdoor dining permits and policies tonight. So Greg, do you have any comments that you want to add?
No, I think you summed it up pretty well, we did hear from most of the establishments in terms of if they were allowed to have some outdoor dining on the sidewalks, how that would be laid out. You know, if they were to not have the on-street parking space dedicated to dining, but still allow some dining on the sidewalk area. Most would be very interested in still doing that. Not, not all of them. But, but most would, I think, appreciate being able to continue with that through the summer.
All right, so let's go around the horn for, first for the board. See what the board's thinking on this, and then I'm going to ask for comments from businesses in the public. Jeff?
Well, first and foremost, I'd like to say that I support the idea of continuing some sidewalk dining, just because it's nice to be outside when, when you're dying. But we've, we've really stretched the limits in terms of local businesses, retail businesses for last summer and beginning of this summer in terms of the parking, so I would agree and support the end of parking dining and parking area. I would also like to, to add to whatever measure we vote on that we will review this on a monthly basis until August 15th to consider any move by the governor to extend outdoor dining permits beyond August 15th and leave the option open to go beyond August 15th.
And
I would like very much to give the parking back to, you know, general, the parking spaces back to general use, and I was delighted to see plans for dining on the sidewalk that left adequate room for passage. And I think I felt I'm basically echoing Jeff's position. I felt I'm basically echoing Jeff's position.
Turn around.
Yes, Eli, I, I'm certainly in favor of the sidewalk dining and the elimination of the, um, of the, uh, parking, uh, parking spot dining. I think it, it strikes a, a good compromise that will, that will, uh, address the needs of all of the merchants, whether they're in the restaurant business or in, uh, the shop, shop business or, or whatever. So, I think that will fit. Uh, this only goes to August fifteenth, and we're waiting to see what the governor will say August fifteenth going forward. Is that correct?
Yes, they will.
I understand that's what.
There, there is legislation already that filed. Legislation has been filed to, um, extend it beyond that, that hasn't been approved yet by both houses. But, um, my assumption is that we will see that legislation move forward fairly, fairly quickly.
Okay, all right. So, so tonight, we, uh, you know, we have to decide when to pull a trigger with regard to eliminating the the, the, the parking, parking space dining. Is that correct?
That's right.
Okay, all right. Right, I mean, that's, that's part of the picture. Everything beyond August fifteenth is still, um, an, an assumption. We don't know exactly what's, what's going to happen. So, I, I, I'm in favor of the sidewalk dining to the extent that, um, it can still meet the requirements, pedestrians can come by and eliminating the, uh, the parking spot dining. I would not want the parking spot dining to go later than, say, mid-July.
Okay, Becky.
Um, I, I love seeing the outdoor dining. I think it just really makes the whole downtown look much more inviting and vibrant. So, I'm glad that we are talking about sidewalk dining. I do think it's only fair to, get back to the parking spaces being for vehicles. So, I agree. And I think that we should, um, go ahead and move to that new phase now.
Okay, uh, my comments essentially echo the board's comments. Uh, I, I think, uh, wherever we can manage some sort of form of the outdoor dining, the uh, the residents' benefits, the businesses' benefit. But I do think that it's challenging to do parking spaces, difficult to justify at this point. So, uh, I think we need to scale back parking spaces. So, uh, but I haven't decided on a timeframe. That's going to be the next, uh, step in this discussion. But before we get into that, what I want to do is I want to go around to, uh, give an opportunity to the restaurant owners who will be, um, would be losing the parking spaces and in this process. Uh, give them an opportunity to speak, uh, if they want to. And also, uh, invite any comment from the, the public on the topic. So, restaurant owners first. Uh, anybody who wants to speak, please raise your hand, speak up, be recognized, identify yourself, and let's go.
Hello.
Hello.
This is Glenn from Ally's Beach Street Cafe. Can you hear me? Okay, um, I heard everything you said, uh, tonight, and, um, I appreciate there is support for, uh, outdoor dining in, um, Manchester. Uh, the sidewalk or the, um, sorry, the parking issue, I understand as well. Obviously, I'd like to see it continued through the summer. However, uh, I would understand, um, to have the freeways, you know, a free flow of traffic through town. Um, I think it's important as well to have traffic continuing down the sidewalk and having, uh, ease for the pedestrians to get by, to get to the different shops, et cetera. As far as a timeline, uh, I would ask at least to give us, uh, you know, a month. It would give, it would give a time for the restaurants and the town to brand itself as a nice outdoor visiting place for other downtown businesses, not just the restaurants even, you know, just to get people down there. So, you, somebody had mentioned, um, I think John, mid-July as a timeline to end the sidewalk dining, that would give us time to, you know, fit our operations out and get it, uh, organized. Would I like to see it throughout the summer? I would. I, I kind of understand the, 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 uh, the access issues and the, um, the parking issues. Although I was downtown on Saturday, I found three parking spots right in front of my store at three o'clock in the afternoon, so I don't know. Um, the, um, other thing I'd like to notice is that, that the state's, uh, current extension, the ADCC regulations, I believe, which is a consideration, are going to be extended till November twenty-ninth. Uh, I don't know, you probably have more, um, information on that than myself, but not November first. So, I would at least like to see the parking spaces kept there till around the Fourth of July. That's kind of before the season gears up anyway. It would give, uh, uh, the restaurants at least a chance to fit the business out a little bit and maybe adjust their sidewalk seating. It would also give, um, give us a little chance to kind of brand ourselves to both the visitors and, uh, the, the guests in town to, um, you know, have a good experience. Other than that, I mean, just addressing the parking issue, you know, a little, little, um, a little time to get organized and, and get the sidewalk seating set up, fit it out a little nicely so it, it, it fits in the look and the access. Um, I think as far as I've seen this year especially, the access on the sidewalks, especially around Beach Street, has been, um, pretty nice. I still see kids riding their bikes down the street. However, if there's any, um, any, uh, other, uh, shorter guidelines I'd like to have be known su- sooner than later, so we can adjust our business plan around that. That's all I really have on, on this issue.
Okay, thank you, Glenn.
You.
Other restaurant owners. All right. Any member of the public have any comments? Oops, uh, Kim Hofel. Uh, you can unmute yourself and, uh, say these.
Great, hi, um, my name's Kim Hofel. I'm at forty-two second Central Street. Um, like Becky mentioned, seeing people dining outside has just been wonderful, and I think it's a huge part. It's, it's been one of those, one of the few good things that came out of COVID that actually I'd love to see continue indefinitely. But the parking, I just don't understand. Parking's always been difficult, but I, I just think that the restrictions associated, or the limitations, I should say, associated with having to have the restaurants onto the sidewalk doesn't outweigh just the open spaces and people's ability to really sit and enjoy spatially and dine outside. I really hope you all reconsider, uh, taking the parking away and, and maintaining this long-term so that we can maintain some competitiveness with the other towns, which I'm assuming are going to be keeping them open as well. Thank you.
And when you say long-term, um, what do you mean? Be a little more specific.
Oh, sure. Um, well, I mean, I, I just think that this was a great thing to see happen every summer for, you know, next summer and the summer beyond. I think being able to sit outside is fabulous. I had a similar parking situation, um, that Glenn just mentioned. You know, we, we were downtown on Saturday, and there were parking spaces all over. I mean, parking for the beach is probably then the bigger, the bigger, you know, draw, uh, in general. But I, I think what I mean indefinitely, I'd love, I'd love to see this be a permanent thing. But right now, I know we're talking about the summer, so I'd love to see, um, them be able to maintain those spaces for the summer.
Sarah Melch.
Yeah, it was my understanding that we were making a walkway from the parking behind Town Hall down to the businesses on Beach Street. And I'm just wondering if that's been taken into consideration with respect to alleviating the parking, because I'm in agreement that the dining in the parking spaces has made an enormous change in this town. Thanks.
Greg, uh, this is going to be part of your report, but you may as well, uh, give it here since I think it's relevant.
Sure, so that is progressing, that, that project. Um, we've been working with the church. We have a sidewalk. Have laid out, um, the area for the new path. Um, we've completed a survey. Chuck Bam and Nate DeRosa in the DPW, they're working on, um, securing materials for it, and we hope to have at least, uh, at least part of it in place, um, within, uh, a few weeks. And, uh, they have some temporary fencing before we get the permanent fencing in place, but, uh, we hope to have it operational sometime early July.
Mike Strela.
Um, can you hear me okay?
Yep.
Yeah, okay. Um, I think after everything I heard tonight, I would advocate that you time the change to the August fifteenth date, where the state will rule about, um, outside dining. I, I am definitely in favor of keeping it. I think it's done tremendous amount of people identifying the, the restaurants in town when they drive through town. And, you know, it, it just, the ambiance is just tremendous as, uh, as a little village where you go to have, you know, uh, a bite to eat and hang around. And I, and I think the other thing you might want to time it with is when, when and if that parking happens, that will improve with the walkway back into the, uh, the back parking lot. So, again, my point would be to keep it at least till August fifteenth as is, and then make a decision after that.
Thank you, Mike.
Thank you.
Dana, Dana's iPhone is how you're listening. If you could give us your phone name. And mute. Still mute.
Sorry about that. I'm not usually on my phone, but he's, um, thanks for, um, correcting me. I have also really enjoyed having the outdoor dining on the streets. Um, I think it Dana Menon. Um, I think it's really, as other people have noted, I think it's really added to the experience in downtown. I think it makes downtown look more vibrant and really draws people into the businesses that are there. And I know it's early in the summer, but so far, the removal of the handful of parking spaces, I mean, we're really only talking about a handful of parking spaces, has not negatively impacted the ability to find parking still really close to your destination downtown. And I think with Greg's comment that the, um, pathway from the back parking lot will be operational by early July, I think that that's huge. I think that a lot of people coming into town are probably trying to find parking where they can stay at the beach, so they're not, um, necessarily parking for an hour or two just, you know, on the street. They'd be parking for the beach and walking to restaurants. I think that, um, in addition to the benefits to the vibrancy of the downtown, there's also still good reason to have outdoor dining. You know, there will be a lot of families with children and children aren't vaccinated yet, so having outdoor dining spots available for those families where they can be more comfortable, um, would be fantastic. Um, and as another commenter has suggested, I'd love to see it continue even beyond the summer if possible. Um, and I think that you look at some of the other communities around us, and they've kind of fully embraced the outdoor dining in the parking spaces as well, kind of dressing up the concrete barriers, you know, making, um, it look a little bit more, um, permanent. And I think that that really adds as well. And I think that if the town provided kind of some continuity that, um, or assurance that there would be continued access to those spaces, that they would only, the restaurants would only be able to invest more in making them look nice. Um, so, um, thanks for all you guys are doing, and great discussion.
Any other members of the public? Chris Lang of the House.
Hey, uh, I'm at fifty-seven School Street. Just a couple of things. Like, I, I agree with all of the public input to this point.
Unmute.
I am, I'm unmuted. Can you hear me?
Oh, we did. Somebody else just, uh, squatted briefly, but you can go right ahead.
Um, okay, so I agree with all of the, the public input to this point. Um, aside from the board, I'd love to hear from other community members and/or business owners that are opposed, um, because we haven't heard any of that yet. Three, um, we haven't addressed which restaurants this actually impacts. So, Glenn and Ally's, they're very fortunate to have a great spot where they can do some dining around the front and sides of the restaurants. But when you look at, um, locations like Callas or even the Mooring, the sidewalks are a lot more narrow. So, what, what does the board see as the, um, implications to restaurants like that? Do they have access to sidewalk dining, or do they lose out in this process? And then I guess the third, the fourth thing is, you know, as Greg just said, we're working on a temporary solution of building a walkway behind Town Hall to the downtown, so we're picking up, in theory, a lot of new spaces or easier access to downtown with those spaces. So, does, does the, the four spaces or so that we're actually currently using really create that much of a difference?
Okay, I'll, I'll be happy to take this one. All right, so, um, can I answer the question about other business owners, uh, speaking? Whoever, whoever wants to speak here may, uh, some, some people send us letters, some people want to speak in public, some don't. I'm not going to specifically go out and ask other businesses, uh, to speak here tonight. I'm only going to ask people who wish to speak here tonight to do so. Specifically, I wanted to hear from as many restaurants since they would be specifically indirectly affected with respect to their staffing operations. As to what, uh, restaurants would have for sidewalk availability, it's all going to depend on where they are. If you look at someplace like, um, Bravo by the Sea, they have a very different circumstance from others. The town can't really help that very much. What's really at issue here, though, is that a, a very, very essentially what's been a precious resource year after years has been, um, given to restaurants as, uh, initially as an emergency measure. Namely, the parking spaces. That's, um, not a normal, um, gift from the town. So, it's an extraordinary gift. If you look back at the history of parking spaces in town and, uh, how people feel about it, you can go to the, um, original, the first downtown improvement project, which resulted in considerable backlash when, uh, came to the business of reducing the number of parking spaces. More recently, we went about the process of reconfiguring some intersections in the downtown area as part of the Complete Streets project. And when we did that in such a way as to attempt to improve the safety of sidewalks of the people crossing the streets, um, at, uh, where antique table is in front of Town Hall. And over at the corner of Beach and Union. We took enormous backlash when there was the, the notion or feeling that we might reduce by even one, the number of parking spots in those areas. To the extent where people were, uh, writing letters and Facebook was exploding that we were doing this terrible thing. So, I would submit that there is a very strong feeling within town among the residents and the business owners that the business, the notion of, uh, reducing the number of parking spaces is very, very sensitive. So, uh, I, I, I have a, a pretty detailed and painful memory of the history of the other side of this where people were not happy. where people were not happy, really, really not happy about removing parking spaces. And I bear that in mind as I think about this process. All right, I'm gonna take two more questions from the public. And then, did I answer all your questions? I thought I did.
Um, no, actually, um, so you brought up Bravo, which, as you correctly pointed out, is like a unique case. They're they're very fortunate as well. What about Callas? What about the mooring? What about Antique Table? We know that, you know, Black Arrow, they they've taken their barriers down. What do you see as the opportunities for those other three restaurants to have sidewalk dining?
Each of those places have some limited options, not very large options, but limited options for having some sidewalk dining. It differs in the amounts. So there'll be a couple of places, spots, some some options, more options out front of Callas, I think than in front of Black Arrow or the mooring. And restaurants will have well, they'll have to deal with what's available to them still maintaining the ADA distancing that they or that's required on sidewalks. That's the state. The state is allowing one hundred percent open of the businesses now. And it's a little hard for us to with our limited resource justify the extension of use of the parking spaces too much terribly long, I think, but that's part of this discussion. Monica, you're actually a member of the business and representing the business community. I'm going to let you go first. And then Jamie, take two more comments from the public and then
Uh, can you hear, can you hear me?
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay, I just want to say thank you to the community members who did speak in favor of keeping the parking. And I didn't, I didn't expect to speak tonight. I expected to just kind of listen. But I just wanted to say thank you to those who did come out and advocate on our behalf. I guess the reason I did decide to speak was kind of in regards to the comments made about previous projects affecting the parking in town and it being kind of a hot button issue, which I was unaware of until COVID hit. But was quickly caught up to speed on. And I and I sympathize with everybody having to kind of tread through that muddy water, particularly how the years passed to Ben in regarding for fighting over parking. I just have to say, though, I do feel like, especially after hearing people talk about wanting this, that the town, the the community probably feels differently about losing parking spaces to places for people to eat and dine and create like life and energy as opposed to cement. And those other projects were about creating cement, and this is something different. So I think that people need to remove their feelings from those, you know, previous projects and kind of look at this a little differently. And it is only a handful of spots. And again, thank you to the board. I know this hasn't been easy. It's been a really trying year for everybody, and I appreciate your support as well. Even as far as just considering adding the outdoor dining to the sidewalks is huge. So I appreciate that.
So just one minor correction there. Those other projects, some of them were about, I think it's a little unfair to characterize them as being about cement. Some of them were about safety of residents, adults and children crossing the street. So I would be personally kind of horrified to think that the
Well, I apologize. I apologize for being dramatic about it, I guess. I just, I think it's, I was just trying to, you know, make the reference that it's a little different, you know, that we're giving something and the community is receiving something. I know safety is important also, but this is also something else. So.
All right. There's three people with hands raised. Let those three comments go through and then we're going to move on to decision making. Brian Solace.
Yeah, hi, Brian Solace, eleven Central Street. I want to echo what most of the public has stated is that the the outdoor dining has brought a new life, a new vibrancy to the downtown area. And I'm sure has is driven traffic to the retail spaces as well while they wait for their tables or they're outside. You talk public safety. I would be curious as to what public safety feels about people parallel parking next to a table or a couple of tables and diners on just the 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 limited sidewalk. I mean, I've I've seen people have some real issues with parallel parking, and I wouldn't want to be sitting next to one when someone came there. But if we were to isolate it with the barriers at this point, expand the dining. And let's not be short sighted. I think that, as Greg has pointed out, we are going to have access to more public parking out back in the municipal lot. And I would even advocate that we extend this right through the summer and then have the board meet again in the early, late fall, early winter to discuss how to improve on what we have here now. Beautify these Jersey barriers so we don't look like we're eating in East Berlin. And just really expand upon this. That's just my feelings. Thank you.
All right, thanks. Tim Hopefield, you got to hand that up next.
Yes, thank you. This is just in response to the comment that that you and that you and Chris had made back and forth. One, I I don't feel like we as the town have given the parking to the restaurants. You've really given it and created a whole new space for all of us outside to really enjoy and to dine outdoors. And the second point I wanted to make is, you know, I've lived in Manchester, gosh, almost twenty years now, and have been part of and witnessed many, many, many of these, I'll call them controversial topics. And I think the way we all looked at the world before COVID is not the way we look at the world now. And if you still had the opposition for these parking spaces, you would have a laundry list of people that that are, that had their hands up, asking you to get rid of the parking immediately. You don't have any oppositions. No one is opposing it. It even sounded like, although I'm not quite sure, I don't want to put any words in Monica's mouth, but as a business owner, it sounded like she actually somewhat supported it. So I I'd really love to know where those people are. I don't think they exist. We've had lots of conversations with folks. I I even, even people who own businesses, but I've not heard the opposition. I I do believe that the way we saw the world before COVID was very different. And now I I think you're not hearing it because it's not there. So please don't take away that part of the dining.
Go ahead, Jeff.
I'd like to respond to those comments.
Yes, please.
Just because you don't see it doesn't mean it doesn't exist. We receive correspondence from people who are afraid or concerned about coming into a public meeting and making their comments known. Their correspondence has been a matter of to directly directed to the board. There has been some real pushback on some people who have opposed the the existence of these barrier spaces. And I think that it's really naive to assume that there's no opposition whatsoever just because you don't see it in this meeting. This is not a question of, you know, the most people who stand up and speak, the more that it matters. We have to make decisions based on the needs of not only the restaurants in town, but also the retail businesses and the need for the retail businesses to have parking that's available to them. So and and as far as the the parking behind Town Hall, I think it's a great idea, but it's going to take time, probably more than one season to adjust to the fact that there's parking there and you can walk through this walkway that's being developed behind the church. People do not want to walk. They want to be able to park and walk into the school or park and walk into the restaurant. Those are the points that I that I want to make from that.
Is it possible to have those even anonymously read into record just so, because I I totally appreciate your point, and I I understand that. I think part of this public process is to is to be able to share that information so that we can make sure we're we're understanding what the community is is looking for. Is that something that could be shared even anonymously?
Not, not outside of aggregating the way we have. We read those public, those recommendations in the public record. They'll identify the people who sent them to us in some cases.
Eli, it's Yale. Could that person identify herself who's been speaking most recently?
That was Kim Hopefield.
Yeah, sorry, I'm Kim Hopefield.
Thank you.
I had said earlier that there will be three more people. There's three more people currently with their hands raised for twenty minutes over on this topic. I'm gonna recognize one more person who had their hand raised at the time. The, that's Christine Delicio. And then the board is going to move on to the decision making. We have some other people waiting to present to us tonight right now. Christine Delicio, go ahead and unmute yourself and speak.
Am I not?
We can hear you now.
So I'm on the board that's pursuing the resiliency of downtown. And I just wanted to make, I agree with all the comments. I I love outdoor dining. I think it should be as long as it is could be possible. But my point was, one of the things that would make the restaurants more resilient is, that has come up in our conversations, is to continue outdoor dining. So I just wanted to put that out there. That's it. Thank you.
Are you advocating continuing to use the parking spaces for outdoor dining?
If that's what it needs to continue, outdoor dining, yes.
No, so there is the option of restaurants continuing to use a sidewalk space for outdoor dining. And or the option of continuing to use sidewalk space and to continue to use spaces that are parking spaces for outdoor dining. Would you support, is your request here that you we support outdoor dining, including the use of outdoor of town parking spaces to support outdoor dining?
I mean, I think it's gonna be big.
You're breaking up.
I mean, Cal, make sure. And I think that's up to the restaurants to apply for that and the board of selectmen to hear their plea. I don't, I I I'm not opposed to using the parking spots. I agree with most of what everyone said. COVID has changed everything. And what outdoor dining has brought to our downtown, the liveliness, the foot traffic, the camaraderie, there's so much good that came from it. I the few parking spots, I think outweighs that.
All right, let's get back to the board now to have some discussions. More members' comments before we make a decision for tonight.
Eli, if I may.
Go ahead, Becky.
Um, I just want to touch on what Christina Delicio touched on, you know, the downtown local rapid recovery plan. As I am a member of that committee as well, and there are a lot of moving parts with that at this point in time. I, I do agree that that having outdoor dining has really livened up our downtown area. But we are, we are more than the restaurants.
Eli? Go ahead, John.
If I may make a, make a comment. So and I I'm a big endorser of the outdoor dining on the sidewalks at this point. You mentioned earlier that parking has been a number one commercial issue for twenty five years. And there's been a lot of history that has gone on with regard to all of the redevelopment of downtown and other, other issues. And parking has really never, never dropped off being the number one issue for the town in the downtown area. And you mentioned even even one or two spaces has has created quite a bit of controversy in some of the, some of the measures that were taken several, several years ago. So I I I heartily endorse, you know, the the sidewalk sidewalk dining, which is certainly a change from what it was in past years. And I I agree that it really gives downtown a life. You know, that that people drive by and they say there are people there. And when you've got everybody inside in buildings, you don't know what's going on. Whether there are a lot of people in there, nobody in there, it's it's quiet. But I I heartily endorse the doing, doing sidewalk dining with the tables and getting the parking spaces back. I do agree that this pathway, it will take a little while for people to understand that it improves access. But we're hopeful that that will improve the overall parking situation for the town. And all of this can be revisited as time goes on to see, see how things fit together. But I I certainly want the outdoor dining with with just the tables on the sidewalks.
The board members. Jeff?
I think it's important for this discussion to keep in mind that some of this is limited by the actions of the state. The town of Manchester by the Sea does not get to decide beyond April, August fifteenth unless there's specific legislation to extend the current the current licensing abatement. It's not an abatement, but actually a modification to licensing. Maybe the alcohol, Mass Alcohol Beverage Commission is actually the the agency that licensed licenses outdoor dining with alcohol. And and under the emergency declaration, towns are allowed to go without going through the alcohol, mass alcohol licensing commission. That's only until August fifteenth unless there's enabling legislation to go until November, whatever, first or thirtieth, whichever one is decided upon by the state. So there are limitations that the town is under that we need to be really clear about. So if this shuts down totally in, including sidewalk dining in August, because the legislation doesn't pass or it shuts down in in later in the fall. If the legislation does pass, I, those are decisions that the state makes, not the Board of Selectmen or the town of Manchester. I'm in support of the sidewalk dining. I really feel strongly that there are people who are running businesses who have been much affected by COVID and not being able to run their business and entertain retail customers to the extent that even restaurants have been able to do that. There have been severe limitations in terms of what, who can go into a space based on occupancy levels that are typically lower than a restaurant's occupancy level. And while those people may not be coming into a public meeting and speaking, the vibrancy of downtown would really change if we started to have storefronts that were for rent. More storefronts that were for rent. We've been fairly lucky during COVID not to lose a lot of businesses. But we do hear that retail businesses have been really hurting and they need to come back. But we do hear that retail businesses have been really hurting and they need to come back. And they need to come back strong so that they can continue to have their business in our town. And we don't want to just be a restaurant town or just be a retail town. We want to have both.
Don't have much to add. The barriers inhibit parking beyond the area that they contain. They're also really ugly. But that that could be dealt with. I my my concern is that we're we're offering public space to one set of merchants and not another. And I that bothers my sense of fairness. I'd like to encourage whatever we can do to encourage the retail places to move out onto the site. I know a lot of them do from time to time. But if we want vibrancy downtown, moving some of the rest, the retail outside on nice days would also have a beneficial effect.
Becky, any comments?
I agree with what everybody said. And I I just want to say, I think it's great. So many people feel motivated to join in on these meetings. I think it's great.
All right, so I will say that I still feel that we do need to turn back on the use of parking. I am I'm hearing the comments from the public. If if it were in fact true that the residents broadly support giving up some parking towards supporting businesses having more outdoor space, then I would certainly be interested in hearing proposals for how we could do that in the in the long run, you know, in a better defined manner, a more efficient manner. What we have right now is not efficient. It's problematic. It's been challenging every step of the way to arrange. I would certainly be open to it. I still believe that there are significant pushback to using parking spaces. But I'm willing to be convinced otherwise. However, for the the near term, I think it's time for us to start scaling back the use of the parking for the restaurants for this particular of work to deal with this particular public. So I think I'm in support of everything Jeff said and other board members said. And I think that we should support the restaurants with sidewalk dining as much as we can. And I will be very interested to see what the legislature provides us in terms of tools to manage that going forward. So we have a consensus of the board. What I need from board members right now is to have a a date from when we think that we should pull back on the sidewalk dining. It's proposed sometime in the middle of July or July fourth. I will entertain any suggestions from board members right now.
May I suggest July tenth, which is a Monday? As the end, that is, the Sunday, the ninth would be the last day of of eating in the street.
I think you might have the wrong year.
I might and easily could happen. Twelfth.
July twelfth is Monday.
Yeah.
Okay. Other board members.
Eli, I I'm I'm in favor of that date. I had mentioned mid-July earlier and really for for two reasons, one of which Glenn had mentioned. It gives the businesses a little bit of a time to adjust during that time. They could even set up tables the way they would picture them to to be set up on the sidewalk and see how that works. Although they may also still have parking space, table service as well. And we also have the Festival by the Sea coming up, which is the biggest parking crunch of the year for our town. And I certainly would want to have all of the spaces that we can have available, available for that weekend. And when is that like in the first of August or so, something like that? So for all those reasons, I think that date makes sense that Ann has mentioned.
Jeff? You're muted, or you're thinking?
I I would tend to go earlier to give the retail businesses a chance to capture the Fourth of July trade a little bit better, but I'm willing to go with the consensus of the board to carry on with on-street dining until July twelfth. If we can maybe put together some kind of promotion with the retail businesses for the Fourth of July holiday weekend, which doing sales, et cetera.
Missed that last little bit.
If we could kind of work with the retailers to to do sidewalk sales on the Fourth of July week.
Becky?
I I agree with Jeff. I'm I'm I would like to enable the retailers to have more time to recoup. But would go with the consensus of the board.
All right. Well, the consensus of the board then needs to be developed by me, unfortunately.
Sarah, you're not muted. Oh, my God.
Eli, I think the consensus of the board is July twelfth.
I think it is too.
With the last with the last dining day being Sunday, the eleventh.
Yeah. That that's where I'm leaving right now. Okay, well, let's move this along. Can I get a motion to from the board to support the use of sidewalk dining by restaurants through August fifteenth, subject to review, subject to changes in station legislature and the cessation of the use of parking spaces for dining effective July twelfth.
I'm moved.
And seconded.
May I make a friendly amendment to that, Eli?
Yeah, go ahead.
Just that that as Jeff suggested, we review every in thirty days as opposed to reviewing in August.
Jeff?
Regarding sidewalk dining.
Jeff, are you happy with that?
Yes, I'd like to change the date from the twelfth to last day of dining, the eleventh, so that the barriers could be removed on the twelfth.
Friendly amendment accepted. All right. Any discussion? All call vote, Mr. Rodman, attorney.
Yes.
Ms. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Rad?
Yes.
It's Jakes.
Yes.
All in votes, yes. All right, now that we'll be coming back to this. Restaurant owners, I appreciate the trials that all of you have been going through. I appreciate your willingness to work with us through all of these months. And we will continue to work with you to do our best and make sure that everybody can prosper. And I'm sure that we will be revising this topic in one shape or another in the months to come.
Eli, can I bring up a peripheral? I know it's only a few weeks, but could we allow the restaurants, if they want to, to to paint their barriers?
I I'm reluctant to get into that tonight. We're behind schedule. I think the race is gonna raise a whole host of logistics issues for the town.
Why would I do that if it's going to be taken away in a month? Why would I put any effort into it? What kind of comment is that? It seems completely out of touch.
Hey, Glenn?
I'm sorry, but I had, and that was kind of a off-color. I will stop. Well, it seems.
No.
Then you gotta stop, man. And I I'm not gonna allow that to continue. I'm sorry.
Okay, I withdraw my suggestion.
All right, we are gonna move on now. I told everybody that the wheels would come off on our schedule. I I I made that promise and I have moved up to it once again. Moving on to item number five on our agenda, the Hamilton presentation on Tobacco Road location. Okay, Greg, you will be presenting this.
This is a bit of a repeat. We had the presentation like in early March, I think it was, and February first of March. We have from Hamilton, Tim Olson, who is the DPW director there. And I believe we have Ken from Wooded and Kern. Ken, I'm sorry, I'm spacing your last name. Begin with a M.
Navro George.
Thank you. I knew it began with an M. I was always getting there. Anyways, we had the two of them this evening to give a quick overview again of the project. Basically, it's a relocation of the existing tobacco road, which goes right along the edge of our water reservoir, water drinking supply reservoir, gravelly pond. So it would be moving the road away from the pond to a more inland location, though not as far as what was originally sixty nineteen sixty-four, perhaps. Easement, so this is a middle ground. So two easements would be given up and a new easement would be granted for this new road. And with that very brief introduction, I'll let Ken and Tim give their presentation and then we'll open it up to Q and A.
Sure. Thank you, everybody, for having us tonight. We come before you. It's been a few months. We've progressed the design. We've gained approval through Hamilton's Concom. We've also gone through Hamilton's annual town meeting. You know, for this project, we've got full support from the town to do this project, to continue with the paving of Tobacco Road. I do have Ken, Maverick George, here with Wooden Kern. He's gonna get into much more details of the project in regards to design details. I think he does have a slight presentation for you. But it's more of a recap and progression of where we were a few months ago. We are looking for Manchester at their next town meeting, which I believe is in a couple of weeks, to approve a new easement through that Manchester property. Like what was talked about earlier, we are moving the roadway from gravelly pond. We're moving upward uphill, not all the way over to the nineteen sixty-four right away. It's about middle ground. We found a good fit there, trying to pull the existing gravel road away from the water feature and the surface water to prove the water quality as well as provide safe traveling for Hamilton residents with a paved road. The the project limits are from Essex Street and Hamilton to the town line right past our landfill. And I'll turn this over to Ken if and we're available afterwards for any questions, answers, things like that. So Ken, why don't you go ahead with the presentation?
All right, thank you very much. Is there a way I can grab? Can I get permission to share my screen if that's possible?
Absolutely.
Awesome.
You should be able to do that.
Okay, let me know when you can see. Can you see the presentation? Okay.
Yes.
All right, thank you very much, Tim. Thank you, everyone, for for letting us present this evening. As Tim mentioned, mentioned where we're here to talk about Tobacco Road. We'll just do a quick overview of the project. We'll give a status update, talk about the relocated road discussion, how that impacts the town of Manchester by the Sea. Talk about next steps and then again, we'll answer any questions as best we can. So as Tim mentioned, we started this project back in twenty nineteen with goals to improve the condition of the paved, the condition of the paved road surface that's out there today, which runs essentially from Essex Street to Pond Street. Improve safety of vehicles by by repaving the portions that are paved and paving portions that are currently gravel. Maintaining a country road feel is important to the residents of the area that that it maintains the the look and character of the the current road, all while trying to limit the impacts to the woods that border the area, the native species that are found in within the area. And then reducing sediment from runoff from the gravel road that was observed and continues to be a problem. Lastly, wherever we can, we're trying to improve stormwater management in certain areas, especially areas that are currently gravel. So on your screen, the Essex, the project starts at Essex Street, Route twenty-two, and ends at town line between Hamilton and Manchester by the Sea. Project is just over, just under eleven thousand linear feet of existing road. The paved portion is what you see shown here in orange. Roughly seventy-three hundred linear feet of road. And the project aims to, in addition to the repaving of that seventy-three hundred feet, it aims to replace thirty-four hundred linear feet of existing gravel road showing green with a paved road surface. Approximately twenty-one hundred feet of that gravel road would be would remain within the existing limits of the road that is currently in place. So aside from the road reconstruction or partial reconstruction, the project includes improvements to the shoulder of Beck Pond, including the replacement of two retaining walls which are past their service life. Each one is presently about fifteen feet in length and and they would be replaced with a wall, one of which is twenty feet and the other is forty feet. Each wall would be capped off with a wooden guardrail that would run along the shores of Beck Pond. So as I mentioned, a portion of the gravel road would remain within the existing limits of the gravel road today. But a portion of it would be reconstructed in a new location to move it further from gravelly pond. That's the primary reason why we are here this evening. On your screen, what you see here is there's approximately twelve hundred twenty-five feet within resource buffer areas and that's shown in red. This project would propose to relocate the road further away from gravelly pond into what is shown approximately in the green location. And what you see in the yellow is it is what exists today for an existing nineteen, an existing right away that was deeded over or that was created in nineteen sixty-four. Throughout this project, we conducted some geotechnical explorations and found that there was significant amount of ledge that was visible and below surface that was present that would make relocating a road into that location a challenge. We also heard and and received feedback from Butters to the property that the there was a desire to keep the road further away from their properties that you could see just to the right of that yellow line. that the, there was a desire to keep the road further away from their properties that you could see just to the right of that yellow line. In doing so, the other feedback we received is that they would like to maintain the, the look and feel and the curved nature of the road to slow down traffic. So where do we stand today? We have, we have gone before the Conservation Commission in mid-January of this year. Were issued an order of conditions for the project. We've met with the Boris Selectman for Manchester by the Sea back in March first. We've submitted an ENF, environmental notification form in June of twenty twenty and received approval back in a few months ago in March of twenty twenty-one. We are currently working to finalize design plans, specifications and bid documents for a bid later this summer. And we have completed a general public, a meeting with the general public in Hamilton at the end of April. And then we have, as, as Tim mentioned, we, we put the transfer of land that for the road relocation in front of the, the town of Hamilton at their yearly town meeting and received approval on May first. So again, as, as I stated, the main part, the main reason why we are here is because there is, the gravel road relocation is located on what is, is currently Manchester by the sea property located within the town of Hamilton. It's located, the existing gravel roadway is located within what's called the conservation restriction area. And in order to change the use or move that road, we would have to go through with the Article ninety-seven process under the Massachusetts Constitution. This is a process which is, is currently underway. We're working with the town of Hamilton to, and, and state legislators layers to develop legislation to be voted on by the state later this summer. Once, if the, the, if the proposed transfer easements is, is agreed to by both the town of Hamilton and Manchester by the sea. So a little bit more detail on that, there's a forty-foot right of way for the existing road relocation. And the, for the, for the existing road in a forty-foot nineteen sixty-four right of way, which isn't currently used. We want to move the project away, the, the road away from gravelly pond to improve surface water runoff from the area. And again, we revealed shallow ledge due to geotechnical explorations in, in late twenty nineteen. And what we are trying to do is move it between the nineteen sixty-four right of way and the currently established right of way along gravelly pond. So what you see in green is the existing road. The blue, light blue color at the top of your screen is the nineteen sixty-four right of way. And the red is the proposed location of the, of the, the new road. Go back. So what you can see is the, the area in blue is roughly just under forty-five thousand square feet of area, which would be transferred back to Manchester by the seas control as it is located on their, on their property. The existing right of way to be transferred back to Manchester by the sea is in green is roughly thirty-one thousand two hundred and seventy-two square feet. And the proposed permanent easement in red, which would be transferred to Hamilton is thirty-three thousand five thirty. So the net gain to benefit would, would be forty-two thousand, just under forty-two thousand five hundred square feet to the benefit of Manchester by the sea. Again, the primary reason for this is to move the road further away, creating a drainage swale along the new roadway to improve water quality for drinking water source. So what are the next steps in the process? We are, we are currently working through the Article ninety-seven documents in, in this month. Hamilton Town Meeting is, is mentioned was, was in May of twenty twenty-one where we received approval for that transfer of land. The Manchester by the Sea Town Meeting in this month, we are trying, we are seeking to get approval for that transfer of land and changing of the conservation restriction area. With two-thirds approval, this would move forward into the Article ninety-seven process and in up for the legislation legislature to vote in, in hopefully in July of twenty twenty-one. From there, we would anticipate putting the project out to bid in July or August of twenty twenty-one with a three-week bid period. And anticipate construction could start as early as August or September of this year in last approximately four to six months, depending on weather. So with that, we're happy to answer any questions you have in, to, to give you some thoughts. What you see on the screen, just so you're aware, is on the left-hand side is the transition between the current paved surface, road surface, a trench drain for wildlife crossing and the start of gravel road. On the right-hand side, you have Beck Pond and the portion of the road which would receive a guardrail treatment. And the last picture is the current condition of, of portions of the, the paved surface between Essex Street and Pond Street. So with that, happy to answer any questions you have.
All right. Members of the board, have any comments or questions right now?
I, I have.
Go ahead, Beck.
With the road portion that's going to be abandoned, what will actually take place to the surface?
That, that's a great question. So what, right now, what we're proposing is that the, the existing gravel road, which is, you're probably aware gets compacted and plowed, maintained over the winter, would be scarified in, in, in tilled up and loman seed would be put down on top of it. And, and essentially it would be allowed to revert back to a natural condition.
Um, thank you. And are there any concerns regarding of with a better pavement that there would be more traffic on the road? I mean, I, it just, and I'm asking this because it's talking about being better for the environment with less runoff. But if you have more vehicles, is that the case?
So, so with the, the improved paved surface, the intent there is to, to, to tackle a couple of different issues, one being a safety issue. By improving the condition of the road, we're going to improve access to emergency vehicles to the area, which we're, you know, we want to make sure that they can access the site. You know, there's been some talk about school buses and, and the postal service not being able to access it too. So, so making improvements on that front, you know, is, is an added benefit that we, we've certainly considered. There has not been a traffic study done to, to determine whether a paved road would make a difference in this or would directly increase traffic. But there is a portion of the road located within Manchester by the sea that, that would remain unpaved. And in, in, in this case here, this portion of the road would be, there'd be some traffic calming measures in there to try and maintain and keep speeds down to a reasonable level and, and maintain a safe mode of, safe passage for folks using it.
Okay. Thank you very much, Ken. I appreciate your answers.
Thank you.
Helen Bethel.
Who'd you call?
I actually called Helen Bethel, unless, I'm sorry, John, Jeff, did you have a comment or a question?
I had a question.
Okay, go ahead.
All right. My question is, you indicated in the transition between the existing paving and the existing gravel road back towards Beck Pond where this starts, there was a conduit for I assume salamanders to get under, under the road.
Yeah.
What will be the treatment where the road transitions from the Hamilton paving to the Manchester gravel road? In the finished project?
Yeah. So, so the existing to the first part of that question on the, the existing conduit that's there, there are a number of conduits that connect each side of the road. There, there's wetlands that border each side of the road. So where, where conduit is deemed to be in, in poor condition, it, it likely could face replacement during the project. Right now, we're replacing, calling for some to be replaced, including the, the salamander crossing, that trench drain. Right now, where the transition is between gravel and pavement, it's, it's the, the sediments running off and filling up that, that conduit. So as part of this project, we're trying obviously to make sure that that is reopened and made a viable passageway. As for the transition between pavement and gravel, it'll be very similar to what's out there today. Albeit, it's a little different condition than the current transition. The current transitions on a, on a steeper slope and so all the sediments running off right onto the paved surface. Which if you were to head out there, you'll notice that there's, there's a lot of sediment being tracked onto that paved surface, which then ends up getting into the storm drain in the, the wetlands on either side. So in this case, you know, there, there would be a transition, but it would be, I believe that area of, of the road is, is relatively flat. But there is an a formal separation between the two. If that, if that answers a question.
So there will be conduit at that intersection.
Well, there, there isn't, there isn't presently a conduit there. If there is a conduit, then, then we would take a look at the condition of that. But at this juncture, there's no plans to install any new conduit at the transition between the paved and the unpaved surface. The, the reason for the, the other conduit that I showed that picture of is that's connecting to wetlands on either side.
Right.
Not necessarily the transition between paved and unpaved.
Okay, so maybe I'm not understanding where the actual transition will occur. I've been on the road a lot. But that's fine. If there's no wetland on either side of the road, then there's no need for conduit.
Right. I, I can share my, my screen again, if you can see in, in, it's right around this location. This is the transition between. So here's the conduit, the existing conduit, and you can see just at the corner here. So this is all paved. But this runoff, when the water, when the rain falls from the sky, it, it takes the gravel from the areas up, up ahead, just up here. And this all runs down and off the side of the road and fills up the conduit.
Right.
Trench drain. So on the other end of the project, there, there wouldn't necessarily be a transition like this. But in the event that there were, that one needed to be installed, we would certainly consider that.
Okay, thank you.
John Round and or Ann Harrison, do either of you have any questions right now?
I, my only question is, what are we being asked for?
This is a review of this product, of this project before we go into town meeting for the benefit of us and for members of the public to give people a review of, of what they're going to be asked to vote on and why.
Thank you.
Okay. Ken, I, I have just, just one question. You're putting down, I guess, three thousand plus square feet of new pavement. And then redoing, I don't know, what was it, seven, six, five thousand of whatever it was. What, what does that leave unpaved at the, at the Manchester end? So what's the length of unpaid road at the end of all of this?
I want to say it's a few hundred feet. I'm, I'm trying to find the number. I don't have the exact number off the top of my head.
I thought it was point seven, point seven mile of a mile, point seven tenths of a mile. That's what I thought I saw. Point, okay.
I think it's less than that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, there, there's, there's a few hundred feet.
Okay.
At, at a minimum.
A few hundred. Okay. So I mean, you're.
Basically, it's basically from the transfer station right where he is right now.
Yeah. Goes around a corner.
Goes around the corner. Yeah.
Yeah.
Past the, past the water treatment plant entrance. And then right where you get to the, to the solar panels.
Okay, so that's not very much.
Yeah. So it, it may be, if we're, if we're looking at it, it's probably I can move this over, probably be about eight hundred feet. Of transition, maybe, maybe a little less or a little more.
That sounds about right.
And, and to the point about the, the purpose of, of the, the presentation, this property here, just to give you an idea, here's gravelly pond. This is the town of Hamilton. This is the property Manchester by the Sea owns. And, and what you can see here in this dashed line is the existing road. But you can actually see that the right of way, this is that nineteen sixty-four right of way. And what we're trying to do is locate this new road further away from gravelly pond between this dashed line in the existing right of way. And again, it's staying within the, the, the town of Ha, the town of Manchester by the Seas property. And, and that's why we're, we're seeking, you know, to, to present this to the public of Manchester by the Sea for vote in, in the select board as well. To give you a sense of how far we're, we're intending on moving it at the narrowest point here, it's roughly a hundred feet, give or take, maybe a few feet less from the actual edge of gravel road to the water surface. And the proposed location would move essentially the same point to nearly three hundred feet away.
Any other questions from board members before I? All right, Helen Bethel.
Well, yes, I have a question. I'm aware that the Natural Heritage and Endangered Species Program at the state level has identified this entire area as priority habitat for a rare species. Are you in contact with them as far as their requirements for any action, any work done in the area?
So, so we've gone through the state permitting process. We, we've submitted our, our proposed plans through the MIPA process and as well as our, the Conservation Commission in, in the town of Hamilton. We had a wetland scientist go out there and delineate wetlands and believe the area. There is a particular area of note for certain species towards the end of the project near the Manchester by the Sea town line. With majority of the project of the ten thousand plus feet of roadway, there's, there is essentially eighty-five hundred linear feet that is staying within the existing roadway limits. And tree clearing would be limited to the relocated portion. And primarily, again, to, to improve water quality to an extent. So, so we've, we've gone through the process, you know, received the, the necessary feedback and tried to incorporate, you know, you know, changes to the design plans, including signage for wildlife passage. Improving is noted before the, the salamander crossing the trench drain. So we're, we're trying to incorporate protective measures where we can, including erosion control and signage.
Thank you.
Eli, you're muted.
Okay, my bad. Sandy.
Great, thank you. I think it's really good that we're protecting the water sources. I just have a couple of questions. One is, you mentioned the tree clearing and that was one of my questions is, are you taking measures to only clear what is necessary? We've seen in the region, parking lots and other construction projects where, you know, the clear construction projects where, you know, the clear cutting has gone out of control, even at the edges. Because it's it might be easier, or, you know, are are there measures being taken to ensure you're talking about a country road feel, but it won't feel like that if there's extensive cutting on either side of the road? And especially because we already have trees cleared on the existing road. We'd want to protect as much as much of the the larger trees as possible. So that's my first question. The second question is a follow on to a couple other people's questions on the existing road, what's there? Seeding is one thing, but putting in some natural species versus letting it just go back to nature. There could be invasive species or just a lot of weeds that move in versus really instituting what we would want by the pond. So those are two questions. Thank you.
And let me take these. Yeah, so we take obviously Hamilton. We've got a lot of residents and committee members that are very you know, we take the trees very seriously. We are going to limit as much as we can the the cutting of the trees just to get the road in. We've had a few talk talks with the selectmen over there. They have voiced their opinion that they would like to see similar to what you said, some maybe some replanting in the area of the existing gravel. After we scarify it loam and seed and and do do something else with if veg native species, shrubs, trees, grasses. So yeah, so we are only limiting the tree cutting to what we need to get the road built. But there has been a few people, even some selectmen that have been avid advocating for some train tree planting and some native species. So we are taking that into consideration.
And will there be oversight when the actual construction is done? So so there's active monitoring of what's going on when they're doing the clear cutting?
So we do have, we are retaining the engineering services of Woodard and Kern, as well as their consultants during the project for the Construction Administration inspections during during that phase of the project.
So one suggestion is Manchester by the Sea have a representative involved so that not only before, but while activity is being done when such as, you know, like clear cutting and other things, so that while it's happening versus after the fact, you can't change it. That there's some type of oversight would be a recommendation. Thank you.
Be happy to have someone on board. I mean, I I've been in contacts with Chuck Dam over there and Greg as well. So if they the town chooses to have somebody, you know, as a point person, I'd be more than willing to keep them updated on the status and schedule of the projects. And leaning on would it occurring for any engineering recommendations or technical specifications, things like that. So we we definitely share before the project and during the project. Anything we can do to help.
Yeah, this was, you know, directed to town officials. It would be good to have someone regularly overseeing while the activity is being done. So any mitigation that needs to happen would would be caught. Thank you.
Thank you. Mary phone.
Hi, thank you, Eli. A couple of questions, if I could just list them out, and then I have an Article sixteen question probably to you, Eli, if I could afterwards. Could you explain what the stormwater management policies along and near gravelly pond are going to be to protect Manchester's water source and what assurances Manchester has with that? So with the salting or runoff, that type of thing. And with the road now being paved, that would be more traffic, especially coming off of one twenty eight going to Hamilton. I've spoken with many people in Hamilton that say, hey, now now we'll be able to use that that direction. So asking again about a traffic study and how that would impact that turnoff there, the one twenty eight Hamilton and Manchester. And then did Manchester attend the Concom meeting that Hamilton had discussing the protection of our water supply? And did our Concom weigh in?
Do you want to take that first one?
Actually, I'm going to address.
I'm sorry about that.
So first of all, from a traffic standpoint, I think I'd like to point out that there's going to be eight hundred feet of road that remains unpaved between Manchester and the end of this project. So I'm not so sure that people are going to be running to jump from the north side of one twenty eight onto that newly paved road at plus eight hundred feet of unpaid road past our transfer station. Rick, do you have any comment on the Hamilton Conservation Commission?
So I I don't believe our Concom actively participated. I know that members have been monitoring it, but I I think they've been satisfied with my understanding is they've been satisfied with the Hamilton Concom's review and the various conditions and that they were placing on it. They have you know, similar similar regulations as we do. So you're going from a very old road that had no real modern stormwater management involved with it at all to a a new road that has to meet the today's standards, which are significantly improved from when that road was originally put in.
All right. Is there any other comments in the public? I think I would like to thank gentlemen on the Hamilton presentation. On to our next agenda.
Can I just ask Eli, can I just ask one question? Just so we know how to prep for the meeting. Are you, is the town of Manchester looking for a similar presentation at town meeting? Or just a general discussion, just so we have, we can get you the information you need timely?
Okay, I think I can say with certainty that we're not looking for the same sort of presentation. Alan Wilson is the town moderator, happens to be present here, and I am now going to hand over this part of the conversation to him.
Thank you.
Thank you, Eli. No, we we're not going to be looking for a presentation. I think it would be worthwhile for you to be present to answer any techno technical questions that might come up. But I don't, I don't think we'll need a presentation. I think my anticipation is, and I need to discuss this with Eli, that our Board of Selectmen will present the warrant article and the reasons to approve it. And and if you are available to answer technical questions, if there are any, that would be great.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right. Okay. I'm going to move on now then to agenda item number six. And again, thank you, gentlemen, for coming tonight.
Thank you.
Appreciate your time.
Thank you.
All right, this is the dispatch options public forum. And so I'm gonna start off a little bit of review of history. We are going to be having a couple of public forums around the discussion of public dispatch options. The first one is tonight. The next one will be in July. We have July nineteen scheduled. And the purpose is to provide residents with as much information as we possibly can and to to get as clear input from residents around the topic of public dispatch and the options that we're looking at for updating it or changing before we make any decisions. So the the discussion around dispatch is a long one within Manchester. Reaches back to at least two thousand five when there are discussions about establishing regional dispatch center. Thirteen different communities, including Manchester, were to get a grant to produce a dispatch center in Middleton run by the Sheriff's Department. It opened in two thousand thirteen. And subsequently, subsequent to that, some towns went into it and some towns did not. In around before it opened around two thousand nine, studied on Manchester regarding the efficacy, efficacy of dispatch and how it was being handled for the fire department and the police. And a number of recommendations for improvement. Including suggestions that would go with the regional dispatch solution. Fire Department long had an opinion that we need improvement, significant improvement to the way that we do dispatch. Both for basic logistics of dispatching medical calls and also for the more complicated logistics of handling fires when we do. And this this came to a head many years ago when citizens petition articles brought by essentially by the fire department asking the town to go to a regional dispatch. And the outcome of that at town meeting was to not actually invoke to support it, but we didn't vote no. What we did was there was a compromise made where the board would or selectmen was going to look into the dispatch problem. Formulate recommendations around. And the board did that. There was a time period of time for a couple of years where we looked into the options of dispatch, both with the regional dispatch center, improving our own dispatch. We looked at options of going to regionalize them with Hamilton. Subsequent to that with Danvers, later on with Beverly. We looked at a number of different options. And at the time, it was going to be considerable cost savings to go to the regional dispatch center in Middleton, but it was relatively new. Comparatively tested. There were concerns both within the Finance Committee and within the Board of Selectmen about whether or not it was a good idea to move to the rec for Middleton rec, just regional dispatch center at that time. So the board decided instead to put some effort into improving to the degree that could our own dispatch center. Not bringing it up to the standard that the fire department really wanted, but something that would at least serve as a stopgap to deal with some of the worst issues that the fire department has had. So we did that. And then things went kind of quiescent for a little while. We hadn't resolved all the issues the fire department had, but we had resolved enough of the absolutely critical ones to to help them for the time being. So a few years later, some changes happened within the regional dispatch center in Middleton. First of all, they transferred a bunch of the state nine one one dispatch calls over to it. And then subsequent to that, the state actually took over management of that dispatch center from the Sheriff's Department. And what were perceived to be turnover problems and other management problems were resolved by the state over the past few years. So the regional dispatch center has now been running for many years, has is now managed by the state. Has a long track record of managing emergency dispatch from the state nine one one dispatch centers. It has a wide array of technological support that most other communities don't have. And it has a permanent staff of both fire dispatch, which is significantly different skills from normal police dispatch and police dispatchers. So that at any given time, you have both dispatchers available to your community. So now the regional dispatch center is more mature. And there's the added benefit that the regional dispatch center is now free for municipalities to sign up to. I looked at it back in two thousand thirteen fifteen. It was going to be around sixteen dollars and thirty four cents per capita for communities to join it. And even then, it was going to save us a considerable amount of money. But so now there's cost savings to be had from moving to it. And it's more mature. And therefore, we decided to take another look at it. So that's the history of how we got to this point. We had made improvements to that the fire department had wanted to have improved. But we haven't fixed all the issues. And the the regional system has become more mature and and lower cost for us. Let's see. So so now we're going to go through the process of trying to get some the public, a list of or comments about things that they're concerned about and try to decide whether or not we should go to a regional system or whether or not we should undertake the process of improving our dispatch system to meet the needs of the fire department. The needs that haven't been met so far. So Greg, do you have any comments that you want to add to this?
Well, a nice summary of what has been a protracted history. I guess I would just highlight a few things. So our existing system does suffer from some deficiencies. Those deficiencies, I think, can be summarized by very antiquated software. We we do not have an up to date computer assisted dispatching software for for our operations. That's an expense, obviously. It's a little under two hundred thousand dollars to get get an up to date version of what we need. So IMC is sort of the state of the art programming that most systems use, and we should be on that same system. The other deficiency we suffer from is sort of twofold. It's a staffing challenge. One, we struggle to to get staff for the weekend coverage. So we have three full time dispatchers. They do a wonderful job. They work Monday through Friday. They each do an eight hour shift. On the weekends, we rely on reserve officers or part time dispatchers or our full time officers who are working overtime. It's been increasingly challenging for the chief to get people to take those shifts and and we often have to what's called force someone to take a shift. And so we we can require a police officer to to take an overtime shift when the public safety demands it. We don't like to do that. That's disruptive to our regular staff, but sometimes we have to. And the second staffing challenge we have, and there are differences of opinion on this in terms of fire and police. But how we staff during a large incident in particular. So large incidents, you the the standard really is to have two dispatchers on, one dispatcher to be dedicated. The standard really is to have two dispatchers on, one dispatcher to be dedicated to the incident. And the other dispatcher handling the regular set of calls that continue. Calls don't stop just because there's a large incident. That two dispatcher model is the ideal for medical calls as well. It's it's ideal to have that. A dedicated dispatcher on stay with that medical call until the EMTs are on site. And we we don't have that staffing in place right now. We have one person on. We do try to back, you know, we do try to bring in somebody as quickly as possible for those incidents that are large, a large fire incident, for example. But that's not immediate. There is a time lag. And obviously, from a from a golden standard perspective, gold standard perspective, you would always have two on. That's hard to justify. In a small town such as ours. So from from the fire perspective, you know, they say we why don't why don't we get that gold standard? Through the regional system and save money at the same time. Obviously, there are other perspectives. There is a general perception, I think, in town that, at least that I've heard from a number of people, that that they want to keep the dispatch local. They think that having people in the police station in Manchester will provide more personalized service. That can be debated. I don't question the quality of our dispatchers at all. They, like I said, they're doing a great job. I know that other communities have been satisfied with with the regional. But that is a debatable point and people have differences of opinion on that on that point. The other comment that we often hear is that our dispatchers do wear multiple hats and they do. And they act as building or station receptionists. So when someone comes into lobby. The dispatchers are the first point of contact. So what do we do if we don't have those dispatchers there to to meet people who come into the into the lobby? So again, it's good to look at data. And you see that we average a little under one and a half people per day coming into the lobby. So it's not a high demand for for that personal greetings. And other towns who have gotten around the issue, they have tended to set up audio video. In a safe lobby situation where people can come into the lobby, they can actually lock themselves into the lobby. As a safe room and they have immediate audio visual contact and then obviously the officers who are on duty. In town dispatch and they can arrive to the station with within minutes. So again, it's a it's a judgment call. Some people feel very comfortable with that setup. Others do not. And so hence we have a debate as to what is best to do in in town here. So if you were to replicate what the regional dispatch can offer us. You would have to basically double our current costs. So we're spending just south of a four hundred thousand dollars a year. On on dispatch. We do receive some grant funds, about seventy thousand dollars a year roughly in grant funds to offset that cost. But in order to have two people on like we would have, actually, there'd be three or four people on at regional dispatch. In order to replicate that, you would at a minimum have to double our costs for staffing. You would also have to increase. You know, our our capital cost. But again, for many people, the cost isn't the the main issue. It's more they want that localized service. They feel it's something that we control more than we would control in a regional center. So again, this is the back and forth that this community has gone through for the past fifteen sixteen years. And I suspect we'll continue to do it a little bit longer here. So let me stop there and Eli, take it back to you and take questions and comments.
So so really what I want to do at this point is we have received some feedback from people. But I wanted to give, we wanted to give the public an opportunity to ask questions here. Staff, town staff and. They want. About this topic. We'll inform them as much as possible. We have some documents that we have produced around this subject. What we're going to do is we're going to put them up on a website on the town, on a page on the town website. And as people ask questions, we will add to an existing. Frequently asked questions that we've constructed around some emails that we've received on the topic already. So with that, I'll open it up to members of the public, raise your hand and. We'll recognize you and you can ask some questions. Sarah Mallis, you've got your hand up. You go first.
Yeah, so I was a member of the. Ad hoc committee that looked at the original movement to the rec center. At that point in time, it appeared to be. Not properly managed. And there were other issues, so we voted against it. I think that now the state has been running it for a number of years. And I think that what we need to look at is not what the cost of the current dispatch center is. But what the cost of the dispatch center would be if we had two people on full time. We also need to look at if we went to the regional rec. What it would cost us to have the police station. Up twenty four seven, so it wasn't dark because that seems to be an issue. And and I think there's a lot of financial calculations that need to be done. We're not there there yet.
Okay, thank you. Other members of the public with questions. Well. This will be a short public forum if people don't actually have any questions. I'm sure the people have opinions. Don't have any questions, so I'll let you offer your opinions too. Board members have any comments?
Eli, if I may. Um, I guess one of my concerns going with with. Presenting the facts is that. We currently are using officers, including reserve officers to cover shifts. Isn't there new police guidelines that will be doing away with reserve officers? And would that mean we'd then be paying even more? For overtime coverage?
We can let we can let Chief Fitzgerald speak a little more specifically to this perhaps. It's not that they're doing away with reserves, but they are requiring reserves basically have the same training. As full time officers. So your reserves, your reserve people aren't going to be waiting. They're not going to be. That interested in continuing to be reserves. They're going to want to get their full time jobs and they have to have the training. So it's not that they're being eliminated per se, but the chances of holding on to them are going to be much more challenging. Todd, feel feel free to add to that.
No, Greg, you are correct and and we did hire, I think we have three and we're working on a fourth. Part time dispatcher only, just just for that reason. If we start to lose, you know, some of our reserve officers as we go forward with the Bridge Academy.
Have you heard anything about that yet? Gotten any feedback from the current officers?
In regards to. The the Bridge Academy.
Wanting to stay, yeah, not wanting to stay reserve status.
Well, I think they'll stay reserve status. One of the good things is we have three or four, actually four full time academy trained. Reserve officers now. They have other full time jobs. Most of them work for Gordon College. So I think they will probably stay, but it's the others that are that will be bridged moving forward. Will probably, you know, obviously if we don't hire them full time down the road, then they will go to a different community.
Thank you, chief.
Sandy.
Hi, thanks. Sandy Rogers, eighty two Old Essex Road. I you know, you mentioned that you're going to be putting some material up on. The town website. Are you going to be holding a dedicated forum to this because? Honestly, a lot of people probably didn't know that this was on the agenda today. So, you know, what are the plans for the timeline when you think you'll be rolling out more details on the plans? The cost implications, the safety implications, et cetera. And. This isn't on the current warrant, correct? This would be for the future warrant, maybe for the fall or next year. Just wanting to get an idea of timeline. Thanks.
So a few things. First of all, as far as the warrant is concerned. This is actually a decision that will be made by the board of selectmen. However. For any. Measure where the town incurs any expense. That expense. Is put on the warrant. So if there's an expense related to one path or the other through dispatch. Then that would come before town meeting. The one thing that is on town meeting right now is this is petition article, which is non binding. Asking that. We not look into this any further. Not change our dispatch or rather to keep our dispatch options in ten.
Is there a timeline where you're looking to have this decision made?
Well. I mean, ideally, we would like to have. A decision as quickly as we possibly can because we're all spending resources and times on time on it. If we could have a decision made by fall, I think that would probably be. Ideal. It gives us the opportunity to have the time, whichever way we go, to fit it into our budget process and to start having. Concrete discussions about changes that might need to be made. Greg, do you have any comments there?
No, that's I think, you know, I would like to see a definitive decision by by the fall. You know, which which way we're going. Then as we prepare for the FY twenty three budget. We can start putting into place the necessary resources to do either plan A or plan B, whichever way we're going. But we need a decision because we need to either invest. In our in our in house system, or we need to start the ball rolling to go to the regional. So a decision is needed.
Greg, I wonder if you could comment on. The timeline, if a decision is made to join the regional dispatch for the implementation of that decision.
But they estimate that it's, you know, around a nine nine month process or so to to transition over. So if we had a decision in the fall that we wanted to go to to the new. North Shore nine one regional nine one one. Then it could be implemented. Basically, a year from now, by July of twenty. July twenty two, and that would impact our budget for twenty three. Which we would be voting on in a little earlier. In in next April, assuming we're having a regular town meeting next April.
Mike Starella.
I just have a couple of quick questions. I assume with the regional center, they would have all kinds of statistics available. Will those be on your websites on performance of that center? And do we have any performance? You know, statistics, I don't know if on our local dispatch. And I guess the the other thing, I guess, frankly speaking, the two professionals that are acutely involved with this every day. Both chiefs, I I think, you know, possibly hearing their opinions after some review of performances of. Either option and not really worried about the money, but just looking at performances at this point. Is that something we will have? They might have information?
So I'll let the chief speak to the statistics. As far as the regional center is concerned, yes, I think that they do have statistics. They did the last time we. Looked into them and I think it's perfectly reasonable for us to obtain those. What statistics we can put them on the website. So we'll take that. Suggestion. And. I guess. Todd, do you want to take the local statistics question?
Yeah, I gave Greg some some stats on phone calls and our. Yearly log entries, which we kind of trying to figure out. How many of those log entries are actual phone calls into the dispatch? Some discussions with our lead dispatcher earlier earlier tonight was probably about ninety percent of those. Stats that I gave Greg were. Actual phone calls into dispatch, but as soon as we can break it down a little bit better, I was going to send it to Greg and have him put it up on the website.
Sarah Mallis. Assuming Mike answered, we answered after your question.
Thank you.
Yeah, can can you clarify what happens with a cellphone call? Does it go to the regional dispatch? And what what is the the line that gets to the Manchester dispatch?
I can take that, Eli. So all our cellphone calls, Manchester takes all the cell nine one one calls. I think we did that in two thousand and seventeen. And they would call if if regional were to call us, they would call us on the five two six one two one two line or through the nine one one system. There's a separate business line that we can talk to local, other other local agencies.
Prior to twenty seventeen.
So if I call in on the cellphone, it goes directly to the Manchester dispatch, not through the regional?
If you're within the borders of Manchester by the sea, yes, that is correct.
Okay, thank you.
You're clear.
I didn't want to make mention, just getting back to the statistics. I do know that the regional center does have a link on their website to their annual report. That has all those statistics. And also Chris Ryan and Allison Delia Sola are on the Zoom tonight. If there's any direct questions regarding the rec center. Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, there was an earlier question about. I'm sorry that I just realized I didn't answer adequately about scheduling of dedicated public forums. We, the next one is probably not currently scheduled as a dedicated as part of the July nineteenth. More meaning we could schedule a dedicated one. We did. Give folks a heads up at our last meetings that we are going to be. Having this public forum now. Seems pretty clear from the lack of questions that we didn't do a good enough job advertising it. Seems pretty clear from the lack of questions that we didn't do a good enough job advertising it. So, and also we ran pretty late getting into it. So I think it's probably a good idea for us to have a, a dedicated forum, especially after we get materials up on the website so that people can familiarize themselves with the actual, um, data. So any other residents with any questions right now? All right. Want to get out of the public forum. I'll have to try again. So let us move on to the next, uh, agenda item. Which is a discussion, uh, alternative July Fourth Parade. So, this is, uh, board level request for considering the option for very informal July Fourth Parade. And I want to say, first of all, I want to recognize that the work that the July Fourth Committee and the three seventy-fifth committee and Parks and Rec, uh, and Public Safety have been doing to, uh, with regard to rescheduling our pathway through our various different parades and celebrations, both for fireworks and for the various parades and events that, uh, over the summer and what we've rescheduled into the fall. The, the question or the request that's been raised is whether or not there is a way or reasonable way for us to have a very informal, very lightweight parade in town around the traditional Fourth, whether or not the board wants to, uh, pursue that. And, that's it. So Greg, do you have anything to add to this?
Um, I, I think it's worth hearing people's thoughts and opinions on how what's desired. I, it's, um, you know, I think the, the, the committee has put together a decent set of alternatives. You know, we'll have the rotary red, white and blue. Um, there'll be the contest for the most patriotic home decorations. Um, there is the harbor parade scheduled for the fourth and the late afternoon at four P M. And there's also, um, the concert, uh, in Masco that evening. So there are activities for sure that people can do. Obviously, we're missing the parade, which is beloved by the town. It's, uh, it's a fabulous occasion to gather. Um, and it's, it's sad not to have, to have it. And it's, uh, normal, normal rendition. We have some challenges just logistically. Uh, you know, we, we have told people that, you know, public safety people, that they didn't have to keep their calendars clear, that they, they could do things on their own this July Fourth. So we don't have the numbers of, of public safety people that we normally do. And obviously, it's, it's, it's nice to think about something organic emerging, sort of spontaneously, but, um, there's always someone behind the scenes organizing. And so it would, it would take, take some volunteers and, and a lot of the volunteer energy is going towards the, the September parade for the three hundred and seventy-fifth celebration. Uh, when, when the decision was not to go forward with the July Fourth, um, we didn't think things would be safe enough in terms of COVID to be able to proceed. So plans were shifted and, and resources put towards, uh, the September event for the three seventy-fifth. And that's, that's designed to be, uh, a, a pretty big extravaganza. Obviously, we're not trying to replicate that in, in a few weeks' time. So there's just, there's some challenges, but, uh, where, where, where there is a will, there, there can be a way. And if people want to mobilize and, and do something on a very small scale, then we, we can talk about that.
Okay, board members. Let's just go around. I have in front of me, well, does anybody choose to go first?
I'll go first. This is, obviously, the state opened up for the possibility of a parade very late. Uh, this is no reflection on the efforts that everybody's making. And it's in no way an attempt to, um, dis- discourage, um, the massive celebrations that we'll have in September. But September's a long way away. And there is time on the Fourth. The, the boat parade is at four in the afternoon. There's time, you know, around between noon and, and one-thirty for a group of people from town, the bicycles, the old cars, the town band, the high school band. And there are organizations that are summer oriented, Summer Stage, um, the, the MSA, who would probably be interested in, in coming together for a short time on the early afternoon of the Fourth. We wouldn't, I'm not suggesting that we do the full route, and I certainly don't want to see us scrambling to bring in outside organizations, just a organic Manchester celebration to bring people, that would bring people into downtown.
Other board members.
Eli, if I may.
Go ahead, Becky.
Um, I, I agree with Ann. I think after everything people have been through, it, if there are interested local parties who would like to do something, um, and again, I, I, I think we should underscore that it be local and small and therefore more manageable, um, in terms of our safety personnel. I, I, I just think that, that it doesn't have to be big, but it certainly would be nice if there's a group that wants to organize something without going out and getting the, you know, the, the big steel bands and the many different towns, fire trucks, just our own.
Jeffrey John?
Yeah, I can, uh, comment, Eli. Um, I, I, it, it all comes down to staffing. I'm, I'm certainly, I understand there's a lot of pent-up demand for all of this because of everything we've been through for the past year plus. Uh, I understand that a lot of the official staffing is kind of not available because they've got other schedules. But this is all going to be dependent on, on volunteers. And I, I, I don't know, have there been, Greg, have there been people that have come to the, come to the town and said, we want to do this and we'll, we'll kind of push things along? I mean, there's, there's, there is a July Fourth Committee that, uh, has existed for many years. And I'm not sure where they stand with all of this. But, um, it's, it's largely got to be driven by volunteers. I'm just not sure where we're at with that at this point.
So people have not been coming to me for this. I,
No.
I would, I would turn to, I would turn to the five of you to say, are, are there people coming to you? And can, can you, uh, muster them as a group? So I, I think the July Fourth Committee, as I say, they, they have turned their energies and, and attention to, to the September event.
Right.
A little reluctant to tap their shoulders and say, can you do this in addition? So I think it would, it would require another set of folks sort of rising up and coming together.
Well, these people.
I have asked a few people. Um, I didn't want to go very far with this because I didn't want, um, to get a lot of people who were enthusiastic and then have to come back and tell them that, no, the board is still, I can decide it's boring and they don't want to do it. Or not boring, it's infeasible. I'm sorry. That was, that was rude of me. I should have, yeah. So I found some enthusiastic people. I, and I didn't, I didn't push it hard because the last thing we need right now is, is to get a bunch of people excited about something and then say, well, no, we, we just don't have the resources. We can't do it.
Um, I just double check here. Okay. Um, I don't know. I'm, I'm kind of feeling like, uh, we're four weeks off of July Fourth or July Fifth, um, which is the, the day of celebration. And I think that, uh, the challenges of without some real dedicated direction from either this board, um, volunteers off of this board who want to take this on or, uh, or very dedicated volunteers who want to take it on in the community. I'm just concerned that, you know, you, you set this up and, and, uh, and it also requires, uh, public safety involvement, um, a cost to the town for that. And there are these events that have been put together by, um, Parks and Rec and I, you know, I, I'd like to see somebody who's willing to really take this on and run with it. It's it's so close. It's such an immense thing to organize. And, um, if, if it's there, it's there. But so far, it's not there. And, and these, I, I think all of this discussion is kind of a reflection on, wait, there's this plethora of events, some of which are traditional July Fourth weekend events like the, the, uh, red, white and blue. And some are adapted events like the boat parade and, and the house decorating contest. I don't see anybody beating, beating down our door to do this.
Everybody's been told it, it can't happen. So
That doesn't stop people from beating down doors.
No, um, doesn't stop us from creating things if we want to, either. I, from, from my point of view, I have no interest in, in doing something that requires an enormous heavy lift. My understanding of what was being suggested was something extremely lightweight, something very informal, something that would by definition require a little in the way of significant organization and shepherding. And I, I think that I would be in support if we, if we thought that we had the wherewithal with, um, you know, minimal staffing effort was realistic to do such a thing, to, to try that. Uh, and I, I suspect there would be support from the public, but I can't say definitively. But I do think what was described to me, I said, well, gosh, that would be nice. And I think that there are other people who would think that too. We don't necessarily have to, um, create a perfect L O L machine. Sarah Melch, you got a comment?
Yes. I, I think we've been ultra-conservative on our reaction to COVID nineteen. And I think that we need to do what we can to open up the community to, to celebrate July Fourth. It doesn't need to be a big parade, but a nice parade will be great.
So.
Eli, should perhaps, you know, I don't know how many people out in town are aware that this is something that people are thinking about. Maybe there should be some sort of a little article in the, in the newspaper about who's interested in participating slash organizing something like this and see what kind of response we get within the next week. I don't, I, I, you know, I don't know how.
I, the, the opportunities for, for Facebook and, and, um, you know, general social networks to get the word out, um, that, that, that's easy.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think if we, uh, started that, if we, I think if we wanted to do that, that we would only do that if this board had decided ahead of time, if there came back a high level of support for it, would we follow through and execute and, and ask for resources to support that. Because it's going to put a strain on some staff. It's gonna, um, maybe be a little bit of a source of frustration to some staff who are already planning for the September festivities. And, uh, so we, I think if we're going to go that route, we have to make a decision tonight. If we got a lot of feedback saying, yes, do it, would we, would we, uh, put our own, um, political shoulders to it and say, yep, we're going to do it? I think, I guess that's the decision we have to make.
Eli?
Yeah, Becky.
When you say, you know, put our shoulders into it and get going, what do you mean?
What I mean is we're going to say, hey, Greg, look what we just did. We'd like you to go to provide some resources to shepherd all these, um, you know, people, uh, running around town because, uh, we, we want to have an informal parade. And maybe they're going to go and say, hey, um, uh, Cheryl Marshall or whoever else, uh, what do you got for some kind of, uh, resources that we can use? I don't know the, the sequence of resources that's going to cascade from us reaching our fingers into the logistic pile and, and twiddling around. It usually is more than we expect. So.
And I think that that's, yeah, that's, that's the biggest thing. While I think it's a fantastic idea, in the idea of it, I, I, I would need to hear a little from both Greg, whose face I can see right now, which is giving me a little information, but Todd's, I can't. And, and I think that before I could make a decision, I, I would need to have a little more information from those two and possibly even Chief Clary, I, in, in case they're involved.
What, what I'm thinking about, what I have been pushing for is really closer to the, um, car parade for the high school graduation than it is to our normal Fourth of July. So I'm, I
I think there's still a lot of logistical pieces that would need to be put into place first.
Like what?
Well, Todd, this is where Todd and Greg, we need, we, we've described the very broad parameters. I don't want to try and, and say Todd and Greg, we need, we've described the very broad parameters. I don't want to try and and say at the board level, what what goes in, so I'd rather Greg and Todd weigh in here and say.
Can I weigh in, Eli?
Please.
So on a typical Fourth of July, we order the entire department to work, and that is if we if it's on the third, if we had the fireworks and on the fourth during the parade. And the planning that goes into this, we start with Cheryl and the fire chief and, you know, the other the other area agencies that we normally call in starts in January. So before I'd be comfortable with this, I would like to see the, you know, the route. And once you put it out on social media, I think it's going to get a lot of support and it's going to grow and grow and grow. Looking at my schedule right now for July 4th, I have two open day shifts, two open four to 12 shifts, and one open midnight shift because of vacation time. So depending on what happens and and what, you know, the board decides to do and and the the type of event that you're talking about, it's going to depend on what resources that I need to call in and as a, you know, as of right now, we've told the entire staff it's not going to be a normal Fourth of July, so they're making, you know, alternative plans. And that usually doesn't happen for us on a normal year.
With respect to the fire department, we could certainly do something without having to bring in extra staff. It would be the on duty crew of three that could maybe put the ambulance and the squad at the tail end of a parade, provided they were not on a call, and then they would need to be available to respond out of the parade to any call. So that that would be about the extent we need to do. So it wouldn't cost us anything and wouldn't be a a big show of fire apparatus, but if the duty crew was available, they could put one or two pieces in the parade at the tail end.
And you mentioned you were looking for something or thinking or imagining something on the scope of the graduation.
Certainly closer to the closer to the graduation parade than than the normal Fourth of July, which requires has has people coming in from all all over. And for a route, thinking of organizing at probably maybe even at at the parking lot at at Coach Field, going out Allen Avenue, Summer Street, heading down Summer Street, through downtown, up Beach Street, through downtown, and disbanding at the intersection of Pine Street. Just to bring people to the downtown.
So Todd, does that alter your interpretation of scope required?
If it's more like a rolling rally rather than a parade, then, you know, yeah, I mean, I I think it's doable, but still, it's gonna we I mean, for the graduation parade, we had four, four police officers plus plus Essex involved in it, so. And, you know, and then we have the other events that we've already scheduled details for, you know, for like the concert and the 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 boat boat parade and so forth, you know, along with other parties and stuff that get called in on a normal year. So, you know, it will be difficult to fill and if, you know, we'll do the best we can if you that's what the board decides to do.
Eli, may I?
Yeah, go ahead.
Um, a point was made that if it's a really good beach day, then we will have, you know, general traffic to contend with. Where, you know, where we we'd be shutting down a part of the road. I don't know how that would come into play. While I love the idea of it, I it it we just might be too too close to it to make it come out right.
Jeff and John?
Yeah, I'm I'm concerned about the timing. I have, from what I hear from the chiefs, they can certainly support it. But there has to be somebody that's going to emerge, that's going to be a leader to kind of organize this. And that person isn't out there right now. There are a lot of people that say, yeah, I'm really excited. And then you say, well, it's on you. And, you know, I don't, I don't, I don't know who's going to pull this together. And we 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 can endorse it, but you really need a champion to try and try and make it happen. And I just haven't, nobody's emerged from that, from from the woods on that yet.
Sorry, I thought I had.
Well, to be to be the organizer?
Yeah.
Okay. I didn't know you were raising your hand specifically, Ann.
I hadn't gotten that either, to be fair.
Hi there, do you, I I am Alison Moreland at Nine Bridge. May I share an idea around this? So it sounds like the alignment that we do have is that the town is still keeping with the idea of having the house decorating contest. And so I wonder if we did some sort of social media push to really get kids and families involved and doing some sort of celebration around July 4th versus the parade, which sounds like it would be logistically hard to execute at this point, given that it's only like three and a half, four weeks away. I don't know, like, I wonder if we could still get the town excited around the holiday without adding undue stress on to town employees.
Thanks for the comment. I think I want to keep the conversation, it's 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 coming up on 9:30. I think I want to keep this conversation constrained about when or not we're going to pursue this one particular option. Because otherwise, we'll be here for many hours. But I appreciate the suggestion. Jeff?
I'm assuming, Chief, that the details that you mentioned for the concert for the red, white and blue breakfast, et cetera, are officers who are volunteering to do that on their July 4th weekend?
Yeah, they're volunteering to do it as extra duty, yes.
Extra duty, okay. Because my thought is that our police have been working through COVID under a lot of constraints. And and having to deal with a lot of different issues that are not typical issues. And I think that if if we're going to be asking them to go again above and beyond at the last minute to do this event, that that's that's really unfair to them. And I would support staying with what we have planned and people enjoying themselves on July 4th in the ways the way they wanted to with their family and a good barbecue. And give the police the day off so that they can enjoy it with their family and a good barbecue. Except for Chief Fitzgerald.
And I don't think we have the
No, I don't think so. And and I am disappointed, but clearly the police are willing to make a huge effort, but it's unfair to ask them to do that.
Yeah. All right, well, a good idea and and what if we could? But I think I think we need to let it go. Ready to move on?
Eli?
Yeah, yeah.
Um but never mind, I can reach out to Greg. It's not about, it's nothing.
All right, agenda item number eight, construction updates. Greg?
So at the moment, it's actually a little bit of a lull. We did have the state work on Bridge Street, 127, heading out of town towards Beverly. They're wrapping that up. We will be having the bids come in on the compost facility the end of this week. And we'll be reviewing those and getting a recommendation to you, assuming we have some bids to present. And we will be going out to bid fairly soon for some additional water work and also new round of paving. Obviously, we need town meeting votes for capital expenditures on those items. The painting of Seaside One will get underway fairly soon. Hopefully next week or the week after, depending on the weather. We seem to be going from one extreme to the other now that we're in our heat wave and then it's supposed to be back in the 60s later on in the week. So we'll see, see what comes next. In terms of a bridge street, the the milling and repaving that the state has done, sort of last minute project, we did not have notice from the state on this. So we've been scrambling to try to steer them in a good direction. Part of that steering includes putting the striping back down and the work is going forward with with replacing the center line basically where it was most recently. And it'd be helpful just to have your affirmation that is indeed where safety really dictates that it really should be. Hopeful to have that from you, that we can, we can move on from construction.
So the history, part of the history of that line had to do with when we changed the policy with respect to parking on sidewalks. And cars had to come off the sidewalks in order to conform. And a result of that was many cars that were parked on Bridge Street. Mostly on the inbound side of town were squashed into fairly narrow space where well, the traffic coming into town is going fairly fast oftentimes. And they were not safe. There were real concerns from people that they didn't have a safe avenue to get them out of their cars. So we moved line over a little bit to give them a safe, safer place to be. Park. So that's the genesis of why we did that. It was around the safety of the large number of people park on that side of the street. And that was something that we wrestled with and which I support and supported.
Eli, may I say something?
Excuse me, do not interrupt me. I'm going to go first, and then I will go to any resident comment.
Very good.
So that was the genesis of that decision. I know that we got feedback from people about with travel lanes. Generally want travel lanes to be a little bit smaller to slow traffic down in that area. But this was a decision around safety. So other board members with comments on this?
This is, this is a really tough problem. Because the state may just go ahead and paint it the way they want to paint it, since they painted it the way they want to paint it. And I I would like to see a limitation in terms of just one side parking and and narrow lanes. I would be in support of that. But I also think that we need to work on and I was very happy to see in recent crickets, the more upbeat enforcement of of speeding tickets and speeding warnings. I'd like to see more of that in this area because people come up that hill on Bridge Street, and they come flying around the corner and they come right into town. We had talked about having a solar sign as you came past Pine Street to slow down with a speed limit on it. And I really think we need some good re, good enforcement in addition to the lines. Lines alone did not seem to do much on Forest Street. Enforcement does. So and I appreciate the the efforts of the police department to what I believe is to increase enforcement on speeding in the core of the village.
Board members?
If I may?
Yes.
I I agree with Jeff. It's such a hard situation. People are just, they've got their heads down and they're in a hurry. For whatever reason, they've got a big fire to get to. And are going entirely too fast. And it's it's just about anywhere you go, I think, is the situation. So I think whatever we can do to slow traffic in that area, the better. I I almost got hit the other day on that, in that area, because some car came whipping into town way too fast. So I I and I'm sorry that people would like to park on both sides of that street. It just does not make sense from a safety standpoint. So I agree with Jeff, parking on one side and a little bit narrower. However, bearing in mind that there are boat trailers on boats that try to get through there now and again. Did I say trailers on boats? I meant boats on trailers.
You know, I think we understood what you meant. Anna or John, do you have any comments right now?
I'm 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 in favor of the the one side parking, although I will say that that corner, national, and I don't know how sharp a turn it is. That's the, I think that that's the the biggest factor in slowing people down. I think they don't really realize it's as sharp a left turn or a left curve as they think it is. I know I've hit it a couple of times early when I, you know, first moved here and I, all of a sudden, wow, because you're coming along pretty pretty quickly along bridge until you get to that corner and you have to drop your speed quite a bit to feel comfortable there. But both sides of the street parking is just ridiculous there. It's just got to stay with one side. That's it.
All right, Helen. Helen Cannon's.
Hi, I live at 13 Bridge Street. It's the tall gray bluish building with the figurehead looking over the ocean. I owned it and lived here for 16 years. And I also run a small studio where I I teach art. And when I purchased the house, it was R2 rated, so it'd be both commercial and residential, which was definitely good for me. Between raising a couple of sons, I, the art career has sort of ebbed and flowed, but I've been doing a Between raising a couple of sons, I, the art career has sort of ebbed and flowed, but I've been doing a big push now and I do teach a lot of people and. The parking in front of the house has always been. Excruciating. Years ago, I finally approached the chief of police at the time and I said, because they were doing some paving and. He said, no, there's absolutely no intent of placing do not park signs in front of your house. In a thirteen. So I would tell my students, oh, you can park here and they'd all be afraid and everybody's like getting mad at us on this side. Meanwhile, on the, on the, I think it's outbound and inbound, but I would prefer to say the odd side, which is outbound. And the even side towards the harbor being the inbound. But historically, on the inbound side, there's, there's a home that's been utilizing, enjoying the privilege of parking on their side. For as long as I can remember. And it's always been a real conflict. I've had to have my students carry canvases across the street. I can't have, you know, events or whatever because everybody's afraid to park. So. When I saw some repaving going on, I was just wondering what was going on and. Come to, I, I think it should just be on one side. It's a very dangerous area. And I've been speaking with the nine Bridge Street, I'm thirteen, there's fifteen and seventeen and nineteen. And all of us could really, really appreciate. The luxury, if I should even say the luxury, the practicality of if we can have any parking, could we have it on our side? There are two residences, number twelve and sixteen on the. Even side, so the inbound that have enjoyed. You know, the whole space. We can't park on our side because it's just, you can't park on both sides. It makes it terrible for the traffic. On our side, we have. Six residences. And recently, of recent note, number fifteen has two residences in it. Number seventeen has two condominiums in it and the new owners here, that between two women, they have six grandkids. And again, we're sort of in the dark, but. We were told that we can park out front, although it's hair raising. And so they parked out front and the grandkids could just go into their houses and so forth and. It affects our daily lives and. I was just, I'm just curious as to why no residents were. You know, told about this or actually even asked. I'm very, we, we all are very. Concerned about the safety. Really, it's really scary around here and the argument for whether. Parked cars on one side is going to slow traffic down versus the other side. I live right here and I see it every single minute and it really doesn't matter, quite frankly, because. People will just go very, very quickly. And quite frankly, if there was parking on. The odd side as people leave the village going towards Beverly, you can actually see pretty clearly. A few hundred feet. Which would be, one would think a safe place to park, not as far down as seventeen, but certainly between, let's say, nine and fifteen. So we're asking for just a few spots. And on the other way, I think the argument. Seems to be where it's a little bit more dangerous. They come up the hill, they don't know there's this big curve. They go, oh, look at the ocean. Everybody looks over there. They don't pay attention to the driving and then there's gonna be parked cars there. I think that's much more treacherous. So. I'm just trying to speak up for the little person here. There's about, you know, eight of us. Who's again, you know, our lifestyles would be greatly improved if there could be some parking on this side. And as far as the decisions that were made for safety purposes, I would love to know a little bit more about that. Because we're all for safety.
So. So the decisions around safety were made. In response specifically to. Residents. Even side coming to us after we changed the policy around sidewalks. It was at that point that we changed the striping on the center line to shift it a little bit away from the even side to give. Parking up there more space.
Eli, I didn't catch, who was it that requested that? Or when was this change decided?
This was several years ago.
Several years ago, right?
And. After that decision was made, after that was done. The feedback that we got primarily. Was actually from bicyclists who were concerned about. The reduction of the width of the outbound lane. And we did not receive, to my knowledge. Comment or feedback from. Residents on your side of the street. Around that change. I don't recall.
Eli, I, I didn't, I didn't quite understand. You said the previous to the last modification. Residents on the even side had approached you about the safety? Is that what you just said?
Yes.
Okay, well, we, we were completely unaware of that. Completely unaware of it.
So that was several years ago. That was, and after that, we shifted the, the painting of the center line and narrowed up the outbound lane. And as I said, the principal concerns that we got out of that were from bicyclists. And I do not. Have any memory of residents on the odd side coming to us at that point.
We had no idea anything was being decided and it actually, the, the others, if I could just, the other side of the road, we can, we can't even talk to each other. Could be like another country, but it's unfortunate, but we were unaware of it.
Okay, but you had to have been aware several years ago when we changed the lane position.
Oh, yeah, but it was already done. And just recently, somebody illuminated Nate at your, at the DPW said, well. The bylaws all along have been parking on both sides. Which was news to me. And if that was the attempt, then we sure as heck didn't use it because we're often overwhelmed by a lot of activity on the other side. So. Yeah.
Eli, if I may?
Go ahead, Becky.
Um, with the people on the other side, they, they, they don't, they don't have any. Other street to park on and looking at, at the different houses, for example, the, the. Fifteen seventeen bridge, they have parking behind them. Then the other units. Are on Bennett and Bridge. Yours is the only one that does not have any off-street parking, correct? Or do you have any parking?
I have, I have a lot of parking off of Bennett. It's, but people come in through the front entrance off of Bridge Street and that should be really where. From the business perspective, people should park. The people at fifteen and seventeen, that whole property, as you probably know, was subdivided recently. And they've had a lot of work going on there and between, there's four, two condos, two apartments, so four residences. They're really backed up with what they can park in their area and they were, they, but a lot of the construction. Folks parked in the front.
However, they have off-street parking and, and I mean, it's just what I'm, what I'm trying to say is that. When you look at the parking available for the inbound side, they, they don't have another option. They can't go park in the harbor.
Yeah, that's kind of a touchy subject. I'm not as involved with it as some of the other neighbors who unfortunately are not online now, but. The. Sixteen across the street has a two-car driveway that. People protest, they just never use it. The only other seven, fourteen, the owner is in Switzerland. There's just a single guy that lives there for years. And the, there's only one other house on a twelve. Where Marty and Steve like to sometimes park a car in the front, but they have double spot. They have spots for like four. So, you know, there's only, it's only one person really, one family that's been. I mean, as well as, I mean, hogging the space and really being able to constantly use that side and yet. That's one household and there's about six on our side. With the grandkids, you know, I mean.
But again, all those houses on your side, they all, whether they have. Ten cars or six, they have parking spaces off theirs. And I, I'm just, I'm just saying. And I don't want to get into a who's got what, who doesn't, but there is more off-street parking. On the outbound side and I understand, I think it's fair to say, why can't our side have parking for a little while? I think that's a fair. A fair ask.
Now Becky, that's, you're totally right. The, the thing I can add to that, however, is Bennett Street is the one that's. It's in the back of my house, bridges in the front, and this is the scenario with quite a few of the properties. Bennett is a mess, as everybody knows, and one benefit is if all, if these people can. Have even one car or a visitor or, you know, a, a friend or a son. And grandkids be there, that's a little bit less of the congestion on Bennett. Bennett's just. Well, Chief Todd, you, we know, so that would.
I know it well. I'm on it multiple times every day. I live down that way, so I know.
Yeah.
But I, I, I don't mean to hijack this conversation. I just wanted to interject that. But this is really between Eli and, and, and everything is supposed to really go through Eli as opposed to you and me having a dialogue.
Right, right.
Alright. So. I think that. This comes down to. Us explaining tonight what, why we made the decisions we made with respect to where the, the lane stripe plan. I think we've done that. I am personally perfectly happy to sit down with you and Helen and other. Town staff to see if there's. Some. Improvement or something that we can do for you. I don't think it's gonna benefit us to try to hash the details of this out. Anymore tonight. So why don't we? Why don't I try to connect with you? Later on this week, outside of this meeting. We can see if we can get a little bit more. Clear what the options are.
I'd appreciate that, Eli. I learned quite a bit during this conversation and I'll get the coalition of my neighbors. A lot of them were online and it's got so. So late, they sort of dropped the ball, but I appreciate that. So maybe we'll just come in and have a meeting and go from there.
Okay.
Thank you.
Alright, let's move on to the consent agenda now. I'm gonna run through the consent agenda and describe briefly. Some of these items and I think people are hanging on for some of these items. So I'm describing briefly and if there are any of these items that people, the members of the board want pulled out for discussion, we'll do that. We'll vote on the rest and then we'll. Vote on our main. So first, the board's selecting meeting minutes from May seventeenth. That doesn't really need much discussion. Second is the public shade and town tree policy, just. The addition of heritage trees. This is the addition to clarify where heritage trees are affected. And involved in the policy. It's primarily a clarification change to the policy. Any board members have any? Need to pull that out of the consent agenda? Actually, I take it back. I'm gonna go through all of these items and then board members, I'll go through once with board members and see if they need to pull anything out. Boston Post case. So the Boston Post cane item is a proposal by. Members of the elder brethrens who have historically held the Boston Post cane. Wherein they want to take the actual Boston Post cane and give it to the Manchester Historical Museum. And then continue with the practice of giving the proxy award for the Boston Post cane. To the eldest resident in town. Thereby preserving the actual Boston Post cane itself and then also broadening the. Honoring of the Boston Post cane award to include all. Potential residents in town. Have I summarized that correctly, Mike? And if you want to speak to this, I'll be happy to let you when, once we get to the end of this list and before we vote on the consent agenda. There's special permit, event permit application and one-day liquor license for the Festival by the Sea. That's the same license that we've done year over year. For the Festival by the Sea. It's added in now because we didn't know before what was gonna happen with COVID, but with the restrictions changed, the Cape and Chamber of Commerce wants to move forward. With that in full, and that's what this requested. There are the clerical and union contract approvals, which Greg outlined to you in his memo. Solid waste contract approval. This is a change, is the shift to JRM. Who have provided us with a better offer. And. And the last thing is a measure, rescuing the town's COVID emergency declaration. To the effective June fifteenth, same as the state's date of precision. Greg, did you have anything to add to my comments on these?
No, I'm, I'm good, Eli. Your, your summary and what I wrote is just fine.
Board members, do you have any of those items that you want to pull out of the consent agenda, Jeff? And. John Round. Becky. Mike Chapman, this is your opportunity to speak if you want on the Bos- Boston Post cane.
Okay, just real quickly, what we're proposing from the elder brethren is a, a way that we can conserve the Boston Post cane. That, that belongs to the town. We want to make the process of awarding the cane more fair to include both men and women. And also, we have the ability that the Hood family has donated a cane to the elder brethren so that. Elder brethren will still be able to award a cane at the picnic. So we think that this is a proposal that. For once in a great while, may make everybody happy.
Yeah.
What's your secret, Mike?
Dumb luck. Thank you, Mike. Alright, so I guess it's worth noting that the solid waste contract approval is going to be a change. For folks in town, we'll have JRM instead of Waste Management improvement. And, you know. Such are the ways of the world. Any comments from board members on the items in the consent agenda? And I got a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Alright, that was moved by Jeff Bobmer Turner, seconded by Becky Jake's discussion. All in favor of Mr. Bobmer Turner?
Yes.
Ms. Harris?
Yes.
Dr. Round?
Yes.
Jakes?
Yes.
Correspondents, we have a letter from Xfinity regarding programming. As usual, riveting. Correspondents, residents on dispatch options. Town administrators report.
So a couple of things here to go through, again, be as brief as possible. So it looks like we're aiming for a special meeting of the board on the seventeenth of June, so that we can get to a few more items that we were not able to get to tonight. We've certainly been at it long enough. So I believe it worked for people's schedules for the seventeenth. So we would take up the forty B project in particular. We review town meeting and, and just confirm who's speaking to which articles. We have reappointments of various board and committee members. We have a couple of short-term paying guest permit applications that have come in. We'd like you to approve, there may be a couple of other smaller things. But focus really will be on the, on the letter for the forty B project and the getting ready for town meeting, which is the twenty-first of June, so coming, coming up. Have some information for you in my memo concerning the Potter House Hill parking area and some conversations to have with the Housing Authority. We'll continue to work on that. Already talked about the path from the town hall parking lot over to Beach Street through the church property, very helpful for them to be cooperating, so that's much appreciated. We do have the issue of transitioning away from these Zoom meetings. I expect legislation to pass to allow meetings to continue on Zoom, but that legislation has not passed yet. So officially, at this point, Zoom meetings like this would need to end the fifteenth of June. We'll see if they extend, pass the new legislation. Again, I'm expecting them to, but we'll have to wait and see. And eventually, I think what we're aiming for is a hybrid approach where boards and committee members would meet in person and audience can have the option of participating virtually or attending in person. We have some technology upgrades that are needed in room five in order to make that happen. And we are seeking some dollars in the capital budget to do that at, at town meeting. So by the, you know, end of July, we should be up and running with that and be able to provide a hybrid. I, I think there'll be a lot of demand to continue. The Zoom actually has been a very popular platform to have more people engage. So that's a, that's a good thing, and I think we should continue to encourage that. But we're in this transition period right now, and it'll take us a little while before we get up and running. Assuming the legislation passes, then I would encourage boards to continue to meet via Zoom until we're able to do the hybrid. Some meetings have had to be posted for the latter part of June. And so those are currently posted as in-person meetings, because we don't have that new legislation in place. And so we, we need to do so. But that, that may change as, as time goes by in the next week or so. And then hearings, notices that go up can still continue with Zoom, assuming that option is, is available to us. And we've had some discussions about the use of the flagpole on the town common and whether or not that should be limited to just the American flag. So I am looking for confirmation or whether or not you want to revisit that as, as we go forward. So that's the one area I need some input, some additional input this evening as, as we go forward.
Go ahead, Jeff.
All right, Greg, I had a question, actually, on the move to hybrid meetings. You'd indicated a retrofit of room five for, for an ability to do both Zoom and boards being in person. Oftentimes, there are meetings in both room five and a second meeting going on down the hall. Is this going to be set up so that both rooms can do that? Is that, is that what you budgeted for in terms of the retrofit?
Haven't budgeted for both rooms, no. So when there's, when there's a couple of meetings going, we would
Fight over room five.
Fight over room five and, 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 you know, for the, for the committees that tend to be smaller in terms of the draw of public, we try to make that judgment call.
Is it possible to retrofit both rooms?
Well, it certainly is possible, it's just a matter of dollars. And it could well be that we might be able to use some of the some of the federal dollars that are flowing our way to, to do that, we could look into that.
I would really like to see that happen so that those boards are not constrained if the more important board is meeting in room five.
I wasn't going to put it that way. Attracts more people. But yeah, let me, let me look into that some more.
Okay, thank you. In terms of the flagpole, what, what is it that you want from us?
So basically, do you want to restrict that flagpole for the American flag and that any special flags would either fly on the, on the building or on a, on another pole? I was just noticing as I'm on, on my way out this, this afternoon, there's the light pole straight in front of the street light in front of the flagpole, basically, where we have American flag right there now, just because of Memorial Day. Maybe that's the location for special flags.
So.
Or, or you use the main flagpole to fly multiple flags, so that's, that's the question.
I think if, if we're going to be, my, my personal view is that if we're going to be restricting that main flagpole to one flag, it's going to have to be the American flag and nothing else, period. If we don't restrict it, then it should be for any flag that we deem appropriate to be put up there as well, just as we have passed with the flag quest. Otherwise, I don't think we're doing a thing, I think we're actually generating an exclusionist policy, which is inappropriate in this day and age. Jeff?
I, I'd like to see.
I agree completely.
I, I agree with what Eli just said. I'd like to see that flagpole restricted and an option made for the flying of other flags. Whether it's, I'm not sure, I understood exactly what you meant, Greg, and I'll have to go look at it in, in terms of the light pole, because we now own those light poles, right?
Right. So we have, yeah, so there's like, you know, there's a.
But, but I'd, I'd like to see the option of being able to fly other flags that we, the town deemed as appropriate on the common. But restrict the flag that's near the memorial to the American flag only.
I'm in favor of that policy as well, Eli.
Me too.
Okay, very good, I'm, I'm, I'm all set, thank you.
Did you already mention scheduling?
Sorry.
You're away the tenth of fourth.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry, I didn't, I skipped over that, I'm sorry. Yes, I'll be away the end of this week and to next. Hopefully a little longer next week, because that means that I can finally move into my new place, so we'll see.
So you're going to stay away until you can move into your new place?
Yeah, maybe that's what I should do. I don't know, my daughter would like that so much, I don't think. Moving on.
All right.
Have a wonderful time, Greg.
Thank you.
Congratulations to her, Greg.
Yeah, it was a long haul, but she's going to graduate. I have a doctor in the house, so that's pretty good.
All right. On that note.
So moved.
Yeah, move to return.
Second.
All right, discussion, all call vote, Mr. Bobmer Turner.
Gratefully.
It's Harris.
Yes.
Mr. Round.
Yes.
Ms. Jakes?
Yes.
Mr. Bowling votes yes, thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, we fly for Shepherd.
Thank you.